September 23rd, 2021, Town of Poughkeepsie Planning Board Meeting. Will please start by joining me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, under a new law, we have still a hybrid meeting, so I will say that tonight's meeting has been convened in accordance with Chapter 417 of the laws of 2021, which dispenses portions of meetings law to allow municipal board to convene a meeting via video conferencing. In accordance with the law, the public has been provided with the ability to view and participate in tonight's meeting by computer, smartphone, or telephone, and to view the meeting on usual cable television channels. The recording of the meeting will be posted to the town website, and a written transcript will be prepared and provided at a later date. We have all board members quorum present for the meeting, and I've confirmed with the secretary that the meeting has been duly noticed, and we've fulfilled our legal notice requirements by posting a copy of the notice of the meeting on the town's webpage and on the town building board. We have emailed a copy of the notice to the media, and we have confirmation that the legal notices for the public hearings have been properly published tonight. With that, we have a fairly big agenda, so we'll get right into it. First up is South Hills Commons. Who's on to represent that? Is Amy out there?
Is Amy on? Amy with the end to Chrisa.
Hi, do you have anything to say about the updates, a brief summary of what's changed since the last visit?
We received the zoning district has been changed by the town board. That was on July 21st, and the ZDA variance was granted on October 9th. We received a net debt from the planning board in May. And we have made a number of changes to the plan, and everything that's outstanding are minor changes or legal documents that need to be either filed or easements that need to be dissolved, but that is all in the process right now.
Okay, great. That's good, you got the whole approvals and the things that you needed. So I'll go to, Kristen's not here today, but Mike is filling in for him.
Pinch hitting.
Recommendation?
Yeah, so Amy, you know, kind of summarized procedurally where we're at. The application is on tonight for a public hearing, which has been continued. It's also on for site plan review and architectural review. As Amy said, there's-
Oh, these are copies returning to them.
All right, let me just mute the gentleman over there. Okay, he muted himself, great. So we basically, you know, comments are few at this point. You know, there was a couple of things that were, I think Kristen intended to clarify in her staff report. For one was the parking, making sure that we're talking about 56 proposed parking spaces and that they are to be constructed, not land banked. The only other issues really outstanding were for engineering. I'll let Andy talk a little bit about those, but they also don't seem to be anything that would prevent the board from granting a conditional approval at this stage. So our recommendation was to, you know, open and close the public hearing, assuming the board is ready to adopt a resolution of conditional site plan approval.
All right, thanks, Mike. Go to Andy, last comments.
Sure. So, yeah, as Amy mentioned, you know, most of our comments, most of the comments remaining have to do with legal agreements and easements. We do have, there is an existing right-of-way that needs to be, we need to show official proof of abandonment, which could be considered a condition of approval. There's also a couple of things related to the existing sewage pump station adjacent to the property. We're looking for some improvements to the access to that pump station through this property. I think Amy is aware of those changes, and I don't think they're too significant. We also have some questions as it relates to the existing force main from that pump station. The force main travels through the property to the north, well, we're actually not sure where the force main is. It goes to the north of the property. We're not sure if it cuts through the property, if it goes out to the road. So one of the conditions that we've asked of the applicant is that they locate that force main and provide an easement over that force main and relocate the force main as needed if it's in the way of any proposed development. The only other thing that we have questions about has to do with the SWIP and some kind of technical adjustments to the plans themselves. Otherwise, we're good to go.
Okay, so you think conditional?
Yeah.
Okay. You don't want the force main under a building or something?
No.
All right.
We also have Mark.
Yeah. I see you're on there. Any, I see you wrote a few more comments on traffic.
Yes, good evening, Mark Patrol from JMC. We did review the applicant's resubmission on the revised documents that were provided. We also included a response letter that looked at their sensitivity analysis that the applicant provided from Collier's design. In general, there were some minor comments, mostly typographical errors, and just looking for the, as part of the project, they are going to require a highway work permit in order to do the work within the state right-of-way. So the work within the right-of-way along Route 9D is subject to DOT jurisdiction and will be required to obtain a highway work permit to do that work and any potential improvements that are located along that right-of-way. But in general, we don't have any major comments that would be substantial that would require further substantial revisions.
Okay, great. Yeah, they're putting a sidewalk in that right-of-way, for example, so.
Yep.
All right, thanks, Mark. This is on for public hearing, so I move we open the public hearing for this project.
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Is there anyone, I don't see anyone in the room who's signed up. Is there anyone who wishes to comment on this project on Zoom call?
If you're on the Zoom, you can simply unmute yourself or raise your hand, and we can recognize you that way. We'll give you a few minutes, or a couple of minutes at least, to see if we have anybody who would like to comment.
Again, we've received quite a few comments in the past meetings here, so.
Yeah, I did want to mention while we're waiting for, we did get this week an email from condominiums just to the north of the project. They had some concerns about some of the existing trees on the site and suggested that they needed to be taken down. That information was shared with the property owner, and the property owner actually responded to the secretary from the homeowners association at the condominium, and they are working on having a look at those trees, so just, there was a response.
They were willing to work with them.
Yeah. All right, so is anyone on the Zoom looking to comment on South Hills Commons?
Don't see anyone tonight.
Anyone in the audience who joined recently?
Nobody's jumping up, so.
Okay.
I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five to zero. And we'll go around the board for comments. I will note tonight, we have our alternate, Ahmad is visiting us in person for the first time with all the Zoom stuff we've been doing, so welcome to the meeting room. And let's go around the room for comments, start with Nicole.
I don't have any comments.
All right, Ben?
Oh, nothing, thank you.
Peter?
I have a question for Mr. Lern. A few weeks ago, we had an arc floating event. When you look at the SWIP in view of that amount of that rainfall and that span of time, do you feel comfortable that the SWIP as it's currently presented would have been adequate to address that type of rainfall?
Yes, it's, yes, it's designed for the 100-year storm event. It should, it would be able to accommodate that storm.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thanks, Peter. And Ahmad?
No comment.
All right. My comments, looks like you did everything correctly. You got the pedestrian protection, you got the five-foot sidewalk now. And as I saw in the packet, you've looked at the, to make a more natural fence color. Amy, was that negotiated, something with the Santa clear that they?
Yeah, that's a, that's a different clothing. It's more of a wooden color. It is a vinyl composite, but it looks more natural.
Yep, that looked much nicer than just this dark white, so great. All right, I think we're ready.
I move that the planning board grant conditional site plan approval for South Hills Commons site plan subject to the following. Respond to the comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies and said responses to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness included but not limited to 1 through 9.
Could I ask one quick question, I'm sorry, before we vote? There was a comment in here about a rec fee. Has the rec fee been established? And do you know what it is?
Well, it would be based on the-
So we're just going to multiply?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, great, yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, there's no onsite amenities in that way for general public, so that would be it. Okay, it was, we had a motion, was it seconded?
Second.
Motion seconded? Call to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Next up, we have architectural review. Amy, do you have any things to share your screen to show the architecture tonight?
Sure.
As I recall, it looks fairly nice. Yep. And could you just briefly describe what materials are being used on?
So we're doing a Gordon Batten facade, the roof is a Timberline Natural Shadow Shingle in a weathered wood, weathered wood color. The front porch roof is a dark bronze. The siding is a Mystic Mill Creek vinyl siding. White and Victorian gray, four-inch wood grain. Mystic Gordon Batten designer series in white, Harbor Gray, Lake Shore Fern, which is a green, Cornsoak, which is a tan, and English Wedgewood, which is a blue. Mystic Cedar Discovery Double Seven Inch Shingles in white. So there's four different buildings, they're all, well, there's two. So there's a mirrored version and a regular version of each building. So the colors will be dispersed through all four buildings. So these are, this is building one and building two.
And then three and four will look similar, I guess.
Yep, three and four.
All right, thanks, Amy.
Sure.
Any board members have questions on the architecture? Any comments on it?
No.
I think it looks much better since you divided it up into four buildings especially and then gave them some characters, so. I move we accept architecture as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five to zero. You're good to go, Amy.
Thanks a lot, everyone, have a good night.
You too, Amy.
Take care.
Bye.
Next up is Department of Corrections on 20 Manchester Road. Who's on to represent that tonight?
Good evening, my name is Michael Burda, I'm the architect for the applicant.
Hey, Michael. And what does, we had done an approval already, but you're making a modification? Can you explain that briefly?
Yeah, since we were last at the planning board, we intended that Family Services will be, is looking to add a 1,250 square foot addition on the west side of the building. So we thought, now of course, we take it into account of a lot of the comments from the planning department, and let me run you through some of them. The biggest one that you can see is that we now have a connection from Manchester Road through the site into, to our building. One of the things that we've done is we've rearranged a lot of the parking to get the flow a lot better around the building itself, throughout the parking area.
Yep.
So the addition is, it's a one-story, 1,200 square foot. It's set back from the front of the, from the front of the building, and it will, it'll be done in the same style as the rest of the building with the brick veneer. We're bringing the roof around, you know, the front roof canopy around, Italian, so it'll look like it was matched, it'll match right in. Other than that, we relocated the records in accordance with to a much better location, and I think we've got a much better site now.
And what about the, I'm trying to remember, are you replacing or repairing the fence along the back line as well as the other side?
Yes. Yeah, on the townie side, we were going to be repairing the chain link fence, the fence in place, in time. Our gates that are currently there, we're going to be replacing the gates with the same chain length fence, our gates. Along the eastern side, we're going to be putting a post on our fence in. That's where we, the, 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 between the gas station and our property until it hits the tree line.
And it will still allow for any pedestrians coming through from?
Well, we have an opening in the fence, so any pedestrians coming now can get through.
Okay, terrific.
And we, I think you might done this the last time, but we've rearranged the front buffer right at Manchester where the parking lot will be moving on to the asphalt. And we rearrange that a little bit.
Okay, thanks. Yes, Eric's done a review here, so we go to him for.
Yeah, this, for the amendment, the applicant has also addressed some of the conditions of the previous planning board approval. The main thing we looked at with the amended addition was, is there an increase in parking? There's a lot of excess parking on the site, and with all the improvements they've made, they still meet, they meet the parking requirements, there's no concern there. They did improve the circulation, it's going to look a lot better for Manchester Road with the landscaping up front. They did provide pedestrian access in a lot of detail, so we're recommending, as we did before, a conditioned approval. There's no seeker review required for this as a type 2 action. So if the board's inclined, it could, we're also recommending that the board waive the public hearing since this was previously, I'm sorry, that they have a public hearing on this, solicit public comment, and then take action accordingly.
All right, thanks, Eric. All right, any issues remaining from engineering point of view?
A few, a few comments to be addressed. We're looking for a few spot elevations to verify that ADA access meets requirements. We have a few questions about lighting levels where it appears that lighting levels exceed allowable levels at the property line. And then we also have some questions about the drainage for the catch basin in the back. The analysis that was included with this seems to indicate that the pipe is, existing pipe is undersized. We've asked them in our comments to take that evaluation a little bit further down to make sure that there isn't a problem at the next catch basin, which ties into Talley Place. It may require, you know, enlarging that pipe to alleviate, you know. I believe there are some reported flooding issues in the back there now, so a larger pipe may help resolve that, excuse me.
Okay. So that could be a condition, that's like one of your conditions then?
Yeah.
To examine that. Upgrade it if necessary. All right, thanks. It's on for public hearing, so I move we open the public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Is there anyone who wishes to comment on this application?
I live at Downey Place.
Come on up, come on up to the mic and just say your name and-
I have an intitiate trailer that I have in East Downey Place. And I was wondering, since they re-zoned it from supermarket to office, there's five trailers that park there every night, truck trailers. Are they still going to be allowed to park there? I know you're talking about changing the, so you can get around the parking lot easy. Is there going to be room for these five trailers to come swinging in? Because they come on that left side of that building, right where you are going to put your addition. And I just wondered if they were going to allow them to still be there? Will they be zoned to be able to stay there?
I'll just, there's no zoning proposed, there's no zoning change proposed? But I'll invite the plan preparer, Michael Burda, to address your question about truck circulation, because he provided plans for that, so I'll let him address that.
Well, I don't think the question's about truck circulation, it's about trucks staying there overnight, which they're not allowed.
One of the comments from, about planning, I believe, was about that. And the trucks, one of the comments is that the trucks are not going to be allowed there.
Right.
That's fine.
Yeah.
So those are just for sale.
There's going to be an issue with them, but I just, I realize you're figuring things and, you know, there's a couple of them that leave there at 3:00 o'clock in the morning. It doesn't bother me because I don't sleep, so.
They can be noisy.
I'm sure it must bother other people, because I'm a couple of houses down.
It's good to bring it up, appreciate your comments.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on Zoom call?
I have a hand up from Stephen Farrell.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, yep, got you.
First thing, the mic for people in the building is not turned on. Second, I think it's a great idea. I like the expansion of Family Services to help connect people. So as a town resident, I support it. That's it.
All right, thanks, Steve, for your comments.
Anyone else on the Zoom?
This is only one matter?
This is on 20 Manchester, yes, it's the only one, yeah. Okay, doesn't seem like it, not seeing anybody.
All right, I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. All right, we'll go around the board for comments, start with Ben.
My only thing is what Andy said, is that pipe going to be enlarged or not?
They have to decide that, that can be conditional, I guess. So they have to, have to research that, and if need be, they'll have to dig it up and modify it.
That's all.
All right, Peter?
It looks good, it's a big improvement.
Yep, it's, it's already looking nicer with the new architectural updates. Ahmad?
I echo the same comment.
All right, and Nicole?
Are you going to be changing any signage?
I believe that we will, and we'll have that, we're still working, I don't know right now. So I don't have an answer for you, so my apologies.
Okay. And I might have mentioned this last time, but the water department stated that the backflow prevention is due.
Right.
Yep.
We're currently, we're currently putting out the Department of Corrections site, and as part of it, they will be getting that unexpected. So that will be done in the next, I would say about, by the end of October, that'll be done.
Okay, great, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Nicole. And I already discussed our fence comment. I did want to mention, I think Andy mentioned the lighting, make sure that, make sure there's no light spillage or glare into the-
I do apologize for that, I've actually, I actually fired our last lighting consultant because they just weren't getting it. So we brought anyone on board, and hopefully we'll get it right this time.
Okay, just don't want the glare or the, or extra light going to the neighbors', into neighbors' windows there behind you.
We fully understand, and I'm not sure what happened last time.
All right. I think we're good then, thanks.
I move the planning board grant conditional amended site plan approval for the Department of Corrections 20 Manchester Road site plan subject to the following. Respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies. Said responses to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness and included but not limited to the following, 1 through 7.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Do you have any architectural renderings you can share your screen?
Hold on a second, let me get through. Are you seeing them?
Yes, you're up on the screen, thanks.
Okay. So top elevation that you see is Manchester, is what you see from Manchester, and all the way to the right is the addition. As you can see, it's, I've kept it one story, I've kept it a little bit lower, and it's done identical, we'll be using matching brick, so that it blends in. And as you can see, we wrapped the canopy around also. Let me get to the side of you, as you can see, here's, here's the side on the bottom of the screen.
Okay.
And you'll see it's, again, we're bringing the brick all the way around. It'll be a matching brick as well, and the canopy will be done the same way with the brackets. And we are adding a new ADA ramp on the, on the far right on the old acceleration.
All right, is there any HVAC, new HVACs or something going on in the roof?
Everything's going to be going up on the roof.
What's that?
Nothing.
All, all containers and all package units will be up on the roof.
But how, I mean, we don't like to see them, we'd like to see them screened in some way, so.
As you can see, let me, let me screen back up. You see how we have the catch group here on the front?
Yeah.
And then it goes to the front roof, so they'll all be tucked in right behind that.
Okay.
So you won't be able to see them from the street.
Okay.
At all, and from Talley, anybody walking in, they'll be far enough forward on the building that with the elevation change, they'll never see them either.
Okay, terrific. Any architectural comments from the board members?
Did you, Michael, I don't know if the board wants to know about any colors of the roof or the doorway openings or overhangs?
We're pretty much matching all the colors that are there now. The red brick.
Yeah.
The canopy is a, it's a greenish. It'll be a light green or medium green, and the brackets will be white, and the windows are the dark bronze. The colors that are there now, we're just going to be keeping.
Can you just remind us what the roof color is right now?
It's brown. It's, it's kind of like a yellowish brown. It's a metal roof, by the way.
Yes. Yeah, it's pretty nice. Yeah, it looked nice when I was out there visiting, so.
Yeah, it looks nice with the colors that are there.
All right, I move we accept architecture as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. You're all set. Good luck with the-
Thank you so much.
Thanks for cleaning up the whole parking lot and the pedestrian path and all that. It's going to look much nicer.
And I appreciate the help from Eric and the planning staff.
All right, take care.
Bye-bye.
Next up, we have Dunkin' Donuts, Basser Road. Looks like we have the applicant in the room here tonight.
If you want to share anything from your laptop, you'll need to be in the Zoom meeting and share your screen that way, just.
Good evening, Christopher Looking, Jay's and Company?
Hey, Chris?
There's another one on the other side, too.
Jeff Stewart with ABDD Capital.
Cynthia Falls with GKNA Architecture.
All right. Welcome.
Thank you. We're before the planning board to introduce this project in August for the reuse of the existing accounting office at 48 Basser Road for a proposed Dunkin' Donuts for drive-through. We've received a lot of great feedback from the planning board and their consultants. We had since followed up with a meeting with the town's planning department and their consultants consisting of their town engineer and their town traffic consultant. And I'd like to walk through some of the changes that we made on our plan with the result of that.
Sounds good, there was quite a few issues to address.
So there was concerns related to the rear of the property and the upkeep.
Chris, could you, yeah, raise the microphone there, that is possible.
Is this better?
Yeah, that would be better, yeah, thank you.
There was concerns related to the rear of the property in terms of the upkeep, location of some of the existing refuse containers, the, some of the deteriorated pavement sections within the rear of the property, and the lack of dedicated striping associated with- And the lack of dedicated striping associated with tractor trailer loading and unloading areas. So we walked the site with the owner of the property and with Dunkin' Donuts in the, along the rear of the property. And one of the things we picked up on is, it's pretty accurate, you know, the refuse enclosures were pretty much scattered throughout the back of the site, sometimes impacting the ability to maneuver. What's being proposed right now is to relocate all the refuse containers to the southwest corner of the site. This seems to be the best location based on some of the topographic issues as you come around from north to south. And the proposal is to create an area that's about fifty foot long where each of the tenants can place their refuse containers. That would consist of a, some of the refurbished asphalt millings from the property that would create the base for that. And then all the other areas would be cleaned up. The other areas that were noted was on the southwest corner of the site, behind the existing restaurant and behind the existing pizzeria place here as well. The pavement was in pretty, pretty bad shape, let's just say that.
It could swallow some cars, let's put it that way.
Yeah, that's a good statement. So we identified that on the plan as areas where the pavement needs to be removed. It needs to be replaced, including the sub basin those areas. And hopefully we've captured all that, those areas that were identified. The other concern related to the location of the tractor trailer, that there's no dedicated tractor trailer unloading area. With the exception of Rite Aid that utilizes their loading docks, as you can see right here. The other tenants here don't have a dedicated loading area. So we provided one on the south, kind of western portion of the property. Not sure if everybody's familiar with the topography here, but in this particular location here that I'm pointing at, there's kind of a steep grade that's not ideal in terms of a loading area. I know that there was some comments that we received from the consultants about this kind of narrow strip that exists between the restaurant and the edge of the pavement. There's about a twenty-five foot wide strip there. And we're kind of limited in that area because we have part of our sanitary system to the west of that. So we don't want to continue to encroach upon the existing sanitary structures there. They're not meant to be H-20 loaded or have any sort of vehicles driving over the top of them. So one of the things that we've thought about since our last meeting, and maybe I'll go into that afterwards, after I go through all the comments. But nevertheless, there may be an option to kind of address this narrow issue here in terms of truck circulation. Because one of the concerns that was also raised by the planning department was the truck circulation on the site, which is a WB-50. And I'd like to go to that plan sheet and show you what the current, current configuration is for that. So right now. Alright, just to kind of give you, so the trucks that come in along the northern part access, the WB-50, this is, this is the movement it needs to make as shown here to drive through the existing parking lot in order to come into this site. This is what the WB-50 for the Rite Aid does. It drives through this overflow parking that's generally not used, comes around the property and then makes its way out to a point of egress. There was a couple of conflicts, obviously, that was identified. Some of it's over, driving over existing parking areas. Whether it be on the southern portion of the site or the northern portion. The other concern that was raised is at the point of egress, the truck comes into the opposing lane. Oh, that's going northbound, I'm sorry, it's going southbound. So what we're, what we're proposing here, and I've talked to both the owner and to Dunkin' Donuts, and we're also trying to do a balancing act because the parking spaces as shown is what was approved for the Rite Aid. So we're trying to do a balancing act in terms of what their parking needs are. We're looking at reconfiguring the curbing over here in this area, eliminating one space here. That way it would open up a swing a little bit more so that we could get a WB-50 around this portion of the Rite Aid. We would lose a couple spaces in this location, but it would eliminate the WB-50 from traveling all the way around the existing parking in this particular area. It would still follow its same path in the back. We can't address the existing nature of the narrow, it's about twenty-five foot in width there. But what we could do is, since we have a shared parking agreement between all three parcels, we can eliminate these five parking spaces here and make this our loading area. So that we're no longer constraining this narrow gap right here, and then the parking is right here. Most likely for the tenants that are existing right now, it's Dunkin' Donuts that'll probably be utilizing the WB-50 more than any of the other tenants. So I think this might be a reasonable way to address some of the concerns that were raised in the comment letter as it relates to the WB-50. The owner of the property also indicated they would be willing to obtain a DPW permit to modify the existing curb as it exits the property. That way it would have a more larger, we can create a larger radius for the curbs as they come out.
That's been.
And that way we wouldn't be turning into opposing traffic. So I think that's kind of our, we're hoping that would be the solution to addressing the tractor trailer issue. We, we're going to update our plans, but we've been working since we received the comments to continue to address that. So some of the other improvements that we made on this project outside of the truck turning and the rear improvements is, there were concerns about the existing aisle widths on the property. And I want to remind the board that the existing aisle widths and parking configuration is not something that was created without previous approval. The existing parking and aisle configurations are what's, what was shown on the nineteen ninety-six approval for this project. They're currently not conforming to today's standards of the town. But we've gone ahead and in this particular area of the site where we have parking that's perpendicular, we've made some modifications, what's going to include removal of the existing island out there in the parking spaces over here. And in order to create a twenty-six foot wide aisle between the perpendicular parking. We've also are modifying the parking along here to create angular parking and maintain a twenty-one foot width. This was part of our discussions with the town engineer and the planning, your town traffic consultant as well. This also allows us to have parallel parking along the front of our project area. So the other modification we made at the last meeting, this was discussed, that if cars are coming along and traveling to the Dunkin' Donuts and the spaces that are occupied either to the, immediately to the north of the Dunkin' Donuts, those individuals would then have to turn out of the project area and back on to Vassar Road in order to enter the site. What we've done is we put a break in the parking area right here so that if somebody's driving and they see that, one, all the spaces are occupied, they could turn back into the project site and find another parking space. This also provides the opportunity for those individuals that are coming out of the drive-through area who want to continue to patronize the other tenants, to have kind of a slip-through to get to the other tenants on the property. One of the benefits with how we kind of aligned this was we were able to shift the drive-through lane as it exited to the west more. This opened up the opportunity to add some more green space and landscaping in this area as it's shown on our landscaping plan. Let me go to that.
Okay. Yeah, glad to see that, that connection made there.
So one of the other comments that have been raised here is although we were able to find a means of addressing some of the existing parking aisle widths in parking spaces here on the southeastern portion of the site, there still remains a desire of the town's consultants to make modifications to this existing parking in the northwest in terms of its striping configuration. There's a hesitancy on behalf of the owner of the property because this was part of what was approved for Rite Aid and part of their kind of tenant agreement. We are, there has been some negotiations and talks about maybe eliminating two or three of the spaces so that we can accommodate the WB-50. But we're really not in a position to modify all the existing parking that was previously approved under their tenant agreement. And we would ask for some leniency that the existing approval would stand. What we would be willing to do, and maybe this might help out the situation, is we'd be willing to make these one-way traffic aisles and incorporate some do not enter signs so we don't have two-way traffic in these aisles that are anywhere from twenty-two to twenty-four feet wide. If that's something that would satisfy the planning board.
Alright.
And lastly, and one of the concerns that was raised based upon our lighting plan, which we provided the town, we made some upgrades within the location of the existing Dunkin' Donuts. We have a number of LED lights that we're utilizing on the site. But we also have some existing lights that we considered, the pole mount, the pole lights that are out there that were part of the original approval for this project. We recognize that there is some spillage from these lights. When they're modeled that go above the point-two foot candles to the property line, we do have in some locations, point-four, point-three. Some of the comments that were raised was asking us if we can replace those existing poles out there, some that are thirty foot in height on the site, to something that's conforming with the town standard. It, it's a little bit of an endeavor on this property to replace the lights on this site. We are trying to make all the improvements we can within the Dunkin' area. But the light trespass, which is very nominal in terms of point-two foot candles, we're asking for the board once again to consider the previous site plan approvals for these projects where some of this existing lighting for the project is already incorporated and making some of their decisions here. And I don't know if you're ready for this, but we also have with us this evening is the architect and she can certainly go over some of the renderings that were provided if you would like to have that at this time as well.
Sure, we can do that, well, we're going to do arch.
Okay.
Well, let's go through some stuff first. I just want to ask you to scroll back to the traffic flow.
Sure.
Diagram, because I had a question where I saw, then we'll do.
The tractor trailer?
Well, it's more the, it's more right in front of the Rite Aid where there was two-way traffic in front of.
Yeah, this is two-way traffic in front of the.
In front of the pizza place, but then they are, it's going into two one-way.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not sure why, but it is two-way, we.
We want, I mean, we want someone to be able to go across in front of Rite Aid.
They will be, this is two-way. One of the other things I neglected to share with you, one of the things that came out of the meeting we had with the traffic consultants, town engineer and planning department, we were asked if we can speak to the fire department about the possibility of eliminating, they have a four-foot wide striped area there for fire trucks. I spoke with the chief, he said it's not necessary to maintain that, we can eliminate that on our plans.
Okay, that'll happen.
And what that does, it really gives you your full twenty-six foot wide width there. Right now you're looking at like a twenty-two foot wide.
Okay, so that'll give you the width for the two ways, so if somebody could, yeah.
Yeah.
Go to Dunkin' Donuts and go pick up, just go to the drive-through.
One would have perceived you have a twenty-two foot wide aisle there and you, the reality is you have a twenty-six foot wide aisle.
Okay, good. I won't believe that. Well, my, I mean, we're, let's, let's see the architecture as long as you're prepared to show what you've got so far.
Sure.
I'll put it, I'll get it on screen for them as well.
Okay. I can go through the plans first, I'm sure you're all familiar with that, do you want to put the plan up? Do you have that?
You guys have, you have the plans? Yeah, we have that in front of us. So we know what we want to work with.
Okay, we'll get the easy part over with first. Okay, what we're proposing is essentially, it's a, we have a two thousand and eighty-four square foot office building and we are proposing to put two additions on the building. The bigger addition of a hundred and, hundred and four square foot is along Vassar Road and it consists of the drive-through window. The second addition is partly an addition that is already there underneath the canopy. It is the former bank's drive-through window. We plan to make use of both of those two spaces for the drive-through. The first window will be for paying and the second window will be for pickup. This will help, this will help speed the service because we know that the queuing is a factor on this space. This Dunkin' is like all Dunkins that you've probably seen before, is a front and back line casework with a dining room. We have twenty-four seats in this dining room, so it's a relatively large dining room. And there is, as you see, a training room on the plan, that is intended to be a training room. We have two ADA compliant restrooms and all, and a back of house. This store will not have any cooking in it, no frying. All the donuts that are fried and any fried product will be brought in by truck. And that will be a daily delivery, which I'll let the operator discuss. We will be reheating frozen product, which is why you would see something labeled an oven and a, there is a sandwich station by the Vassar Road drive-through window. Again, that's more of like a convection oven, which is just heating, heating and cooling.
Alright.
Moving on to the exterior of the building, along the parking lot entry, we have, we have the existing building is going to be, the existing finishes that we will mainly be painting. The fascia, where we have, where we have metal panels and I don't know how to describe those posts that are attached to it, will be removed and replaced with an EPAS finish. The vestibule, which currently has a billboard type sign on it, will be replaced and will put glass on the front of the vestibule. There is one section of glass that we are removing and that is where you see the Poughkeepsie Runs on Dunkin' artwork. The Poughkeepsie Runs on Dunkin' artwork will sit on a wood tone fiber cement siding, which I'll pass around so you can see. And, and that's all the finishes that are on that facade. The main part of the building will be painted the gray that you see on the finish board and the upper part where the fascia, where the metal panels are will be white. Moving on to the south elevation, which is the drive-through elevation, along that we'll have the same color finishes. We'll have canopies over the two drive-through windows, both of those will be metal canopies and they're orange in color. On the windows and on the addition, we have a stone finish. And I was given an update that you wanted a stone to match the existing shopping center. But I went back to the shopping center today and realized what I'm showing on this plan isn't really the stone you were referring to. This is closer to the stone that was on the sushi restaurant whereas the existing building has a colonnade with a ledge stone type stacked stone, light brown with gray type finish. So I will be changing that to reflect that.
Right, we're just thinking of some way to tie it together.
Right, right. Over the, over the pickup drive-through window, we do have an. Over the pickup drive-through window, we do have an internally illuminated DD sign. And it's sitting on a monolith with a white background. And again, we have that wood-tone siding with the pink and white striped metal channels. We're also putting a graphic on the side of the building. It's directing to the pickup window, but just to break up that side of the facade.
All right.
Okay.
Same little colors all the way around, looks pretty straightforward.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Same finishes and nothing special on the back.
Then when you go around the board, people make their comments on the architecture. So for now, we'll move on to, who's got this one? Eric?
You can see we had a number of comments supplemented by the traffic consultant and engineering. As far as planning comments go, I guess there's just a bunch of things. I think, Chris, some of your ideas are good ones, just to respond to some of those. I think, you know, the board is the right tool for parking. I think we need, one of the things we asked for was a calculation for site-wide of parking, which we don't have presently. But I think your ideas about the north area, considering the nineteen ninety-six parking, are probably quite reasonable. We'll just have to look at the data for that. And making one day certainly sounds reasonable.
I forgot to ask you that. One of the questions about the parking. Is there something that you want more besides the parking calculations we did?
The parking calculations provided were only for the Dunkin' Donuts parcel?
Well, for the entire site, we had. We had a separate table for that.
That's in case they already addressed it. Okay, then you may have already addressed it.
Okay, yeah.
Sure.
I probably put in a location where it wasn't very obvious to you, so.
Yeah, I saw, I saw the analysis in the file table, so that's what I looked at. The lighting, lighting is up to the board. You might want to discuss that. I know the code seeks to have some consistent lighting throughout the site. Chris's point is well-taken that there is previously lighting at this site, so it's, you know, your discretion if you want to see it upgraded or not. I guess the only other comment I'd point out from planning that stands out is seeking some kind of handicapped accessible pathway between the strip mall that exists and the new Dunkin' Donuts to enhance circulation on the site for people as well as for cars.
And that's doable.
Maybe it's a crosswalk there. Oh, and I know you were referring to a floor plan in your discussion of architecture. I didn't see that in our architectural submittals, so you might want to, did we get that? I don't have it in my submittal.
Yeah.
So you might, for discussion next time, we're totally looking at this again, I think, so if you could provide that for next time, I think the board would appreciate it.
Yeah, because that was one of my questions, how many seats do they have inside?
So I'll let engineering and traffic provide their comments. Oh, I'm sorry, and we're proposing for this, we're proposing for this application of the board over the public hearing to get comment from the board. There are some residential neighbors to the site, and then to defer the application seeking addition of comment.
All right, thanks, Eric. Now let me go to engineering next.
Sure. Just to continue the conversation about lighting. You know, I don't think our concern is quite so much the lighting levels that are crossing the property line as potential glare from that tall, that tall light fixture. So I don't know if it's possible to fit it with shielding or something like that. I mean, maybe that would be a solution, just to kind of help, you know, modify that existing fixture. Another question we had was about the, if you've had any updates or discussions with the health department. I know there was a question as to whether or not the existing common use agreement for the septic system was going to be satisfactory to them, or if you would need some other transportation corporation to be formed.
So we've, since we've submitted this plan, there's been a modification to where we're going to locate the septic system. It's not going to be, we're not going to expand the existing field. We're going to put in a separate field for the Dunkin' Donuts. That's some, that's a separate conversation we've had with the Department of Health. There is an agreement, easement agreement that's being prepared in terms of the shared utilities and the responsible party. That's going to be submitted to the Department of Health by the owner of the property for the Department of Health's review and consideration. They recognize that we're not going to be in a position to create a transportation corporation here, because they also recognize that town of Poughkeepsie is not going to accept that.
Yeah, right. So that would be the question, is who the backup entity would be if that were to be formed, so.
That's what's being discussed with them. They have a separate attorney working on that for them.
Okay, all right, great. I think, I mean, really, I think, I think the traffic engineer has the majority of the comments on this project. I would just ask, one of the comments we had was in terms of a maintenance and protection of traffic plan for this, to make sure that, you know, traffic can flow during construction of the project itself.
There is a few comments that you had here in terms of a phasing schedule, in terms of construction as well. And I'm not trying to push you off, but I want to define the complete scope of work for this project before I provide a phasing and traffic protection control plan for the entire development, because I'd rather try to do this maybe once, maybe twice, as opposed to three or four times. So once we have the details of what everybody's desire is, we can then put that plan together for your review.
All right, thanks, Chris.
That's it for me.
Thought I was gonna get a comment on having to dry well.
Can I get Mark to?
Yep. I was wondering if you could unshare your screen there, so we can see if Mark.
There he is, all right.
Hello. Hello, everyone. Mark Patrol again, JMC. We did receive the applicant's revised submission, and we had broken out our comments into a few sections. So there was a traffic assessment that was done as part of this application. Based on, as the applicant stated, we had a meeting with them to discuss several of the items from the past proposal, and which they accommodated some of those comments that were discussed at that meeting. Based on discussion with town staff, as well as consideration of the county's review of the proposed redevelopment, we came to an understanding of what kind of traffic analysis we would request from the applicant. And in that case, we asked for them to analyze the shopping center's exiting driveway based on record historical data, as well as projecting volumes based on utilizing industry-standard Institute of Transportation Engineers data. And based on the comparison of the existing center versus the proposed center with the Dunkin' Donuts, the levels of service in the AM remain the same. There's no degradation in levels of service at the exiting side driveway. However, there is a degradation from the level of service D to a level of service E for turning left out of that driveway onto Vassar Road. Additionally, we looked at the queuing that was done in that analysis, and it was determined, in looking at the queues, the ninety-fifth percentile queue would block the internal circulation of the internal drive, where the exiting drive for the center intersects with the exit for the drive-through. Again, this is a ninety-fifth percentile queue, and it's under more of the intense time periods versus on average. It wouldn't happen, it would not occur on average, but just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. And then, based on the site plans, a lot of the comments that I had were already discussed by the applicant and Chris going through about the two-way, and the chairman mentioning about the two-way along the frontage in front of Rite Aid there. That was one of my comments, so happy to see that that was addressed and was coordinated with the fire department. And then also on the exit for the drive-through for the Dunkin' Donuts, it's currently shown as an eighteen-foot-wide lane. And we either, we don't have a preference, though I believe Andy Lern had a preference. We either ask the applicant to revise the drive-through exit to be fifteen-foot-wide single exit connecting to the internal circulation lane, or do a twenty-foot-wide with separate left and right, sorry, separate through left and a separate right turn lane being ten-foot-wide each. I believe, based on discussions with Andy, he preferred the option of a single lane at fifteen feet wide. And then, we did have the general comments, as Chris had mentioned, about the backup aisle of twenty-six feet, some of them being twenty-two feet. And then his discussion talking about the truck maneuvers and the, what was approved in the Rite Aid plan, which I was not aware of, that was what the approved sketch was like. It sounds like it might be feasible with what he was suggesting with some of the alterations and what was being discussed. So we can take a look at that further. We did ask for the applicant to provide a full site distance line for the exiting drive onto Vassar Road. They provided a response, but we were just looking for a plan that shows the site lines exiting the shopping center. And then, we did mention in there about the truck maneuvers exiting onto Vassar Road, which Chris had, Chris had mentioned, which seems feasible and something that would be acceptable in alleviating that concern, of course, in the double yellow. And then, I think there was just some additional radius that we were just looking to have labeled in some of the areas that weren't shown. But all in all, that's pretty much a synopsis of our review of this. But a lot of the comments and revisions to this plan were based on our discussions that we've had with them in our meeting that we had with planning staff and engineering consultant.
And you're satisfied with the amount of queuing that they've discussed? We have eight cars that fit in there. I think Dunkin' Donuts said their standard is six cars.
Yeah, I believe they mentioned six to the order menu board, I believe, and then two additional for a total of eight, unless I'm incorrect. Chris, you can weigh in and let me know, but I believe that was what was mentioned. But it, it seems to be, looking at the nearby vicinity, that a hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifty-five seems to be some of the, on the lower end as far as available queues. There are ones that are, that are longer in the nearby, other Dunkin' Donuts that are nearby. That is Dunkin' Donuts, I guess, standard, and, you know, that's okay with me. But I'm wondering whether or not, if there's some additional supporting material that the applicant provide, maybe to do like a queuing analysis at a similar Dunkin' Donuts to actually measure how many vehicles are in queue instead of just the Dunkin' design. But I'll leave that up to the board to see, but that's something, maybe that might be additional that the board might look to request.
Okay, thanks. The ones on Route nine are probably busier than this will be, but we have to.
That's exactly what we're, we're just discussing. They have different types of stores, A, B, and C. Like a Route nine store is like a type A. And this, I think if I recall, when the one across the street went in many years ago, it was being looked at as kind of like their lower-end type C-type store in terms of the amount of traffic that's generated from the road that it fronts along, so.
Well, good, you know, supply some information so we can be sure of that. You know, when it was across the street, it had no drive-through, so.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying in terms of the amount of traffic that they anticipate at these stores.
Oh, okay.
They anticipate more on a Route nine than they would on a Vassar Road or.
Yep. All right, thanks, Mark, for your comments.
You're welcome.
At this point, I'll go to the public hearing. So I moved the board, moved, we opened a public hearing for this project. Moved and seconded, called to question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five to zero. If there are any in the audience who wish to comment on Dunkin' Donuts tonight. Either in the room or on Zoom, you can raise your hand.
I know there's a few people on the phone, on the Zoom, so if you're on the phone and you want to unmute yourself, it's star six. Star nine to raise your hand, but if you just unmute yourself, that would be okay, so. Quite a few people in the Zoom.
No hands.
That no hands, or no one trying to unmute themselves, that I can see.
All right, well, the public hearing will be continued, so more, more opportunities. So I move with the planning board to adjourn the public hearing to, when do you think you want to come back? October, November?
We would submit, uh.
Submit for.
In October for your November meeting.
Okay, okay. Then we adjourn the public hearing to November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. All right, we'll go around the board for comments. Start with Peter this time.
I have a question for Mark. You mentioned that there's an LOS change for the existing left-hairline lane from a D to an E. Do you know what the difference in wait time is between a D level and an E level?
So the, I'm just looking right now, the level of service change is approximately, oh, sorry, the delay change that they are projecting is twelve-point-nine seconds on average, is what they're showing as far as an increase from that D to an E.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
You're going to be replacing some crumbling pavement on the west side of the building. Who's going to be, who will pay for that? Are you or the landlord going to be doing that?
The landlord will be replacing the pavement in the rear of the buildings.
Could we get a letter from the landlord, basically representing that he's going to be responsible for doing that?
We can do that.
I'm the landlord, and I agreed to do that. In fact, we already had started that before this all started. We're pretty new owners there, and we started the front, put new signage, did a lot of new landscaping, updated a lot of stuff there. Had the parking lot restrypped, did a lot of work, and we were going to go into the back anyway. So we had raise up some of the back where it was sinking down, put up to raise it up, and we had a guy coming in down to give us a price. So this is all going to be done anyway.
All right, just send us a one-sentence letter. That's all, that you're representing that you're going to take care of that.
Yes.
Because we, just, most faded ink is clearer than the sharpest memory. Roughly, where is the septic system going to be located? Approximately.
Septic system is going to be located, a portion of it will be located here, in this area.
I know we don't have the screen right now.
Is it going to be to the west of the building, to the east, to the?
I'm going to share my screen up. What am I going on here?
East, okay.
It's going to be to the east and north.
That's, that's fine, okay. The existing HVAC, is that currently located on the roof?
Yes, it is.
Okay, will you be providing some kind of shield?
We can provide some kind of shield.
Great, because we will require that. You have referenced, I don't know whether this is relevant or not, but you have the existing pass-through between this property and Stewart's. I don't know if that is being considered in terms of the, you know, internal flow. But do you know, or are you aware, if there is a deed of easement between Stewart's and your, and your property?
I don't, I don't know that there is.
Okay. We, I probably would ask the town attorney, just so we would know, when we're considering this long-term, whether or not it's even relevant that you have that, that pass-through. It might even be relevant, but at least I think we should know that if at some time Stewart's decides if there is no reason to close that, or if you did, the current owner, we should at least know or have that. You, we got some information someone sent us, it might have been you, about queuing.
Yes.
And there was, the queuing ran between seven-plus and eleven, I think was the peak amount.
They're doing it right now.
The information that I provided, the queuing from the entrance to the drive-through to the window ranged from six cars to eight cars.
Okay, then I saw another document that had queuing at a different level. That's why I asked. I'll go back and look at my file. I don't know where that came from, but someone provided us with some information about queuing. Because if it were over eight, it would definitely cut off the eastbound exit. Because if it were over eight, it would definitely cut off the eastbound exit lane.
No, we've, we've planned this to have six cars between the menu board and the window and additional two from the entrance to the menu board.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Great, thanks, Peter. Ben?
Um, just bringing up that left turn onto Vassar again. I did hear some discussion about trying to eliminate the left turn onto Vassar. I don't know if that's a good idea, just, the only place I could think of similar is the McDonald's on Main Street. You could pull out a McDonald's, there's no left turn sign there. Either people just ignore it and do it, or they go to Autozone, which there's nothing but piss-off Autozone. In this case, it would be Stewart's.
Right.
So that's why Peter had a good point about an easement with Stewart's.
Yep.
So, you know, I don't know if that's a good idea.
Yeah, I'd like to, you know, I don't want anybody turning, turning left to be, or anybody turning right to be held up by, behind somebody that can't get out to the left, because.
And a twelve and a half second delay really is nothing.
So.
We would prefer to hang them left also.
Yeah, I, I think it's still good to have both left and right turns and, and do the expanded radius as we said
Expanded radius, yeah.
to help the trucks.
And you mentioned deliveries. When do you expect the deliveries to happen? Probably early in the morning, and that's it, just once a day?
Yeah, early, early in the morning and then once a week typically. We have a larger delivery that, we don't really have much control over determining when that happens. It's on a route, but it's typically between six AM and five PM.
Okay, but the, the, the product donuts and things like that is probably early delivery, but things like cups and napkins and things could be later, right?
That's on a weekly delivery, yes.
Right, okay. And, uh, I don't want to take everything, but what are the hours of operation for this location?
Typically, we operate from four AM till eleven PM, but.
You know, some Dunkin' Donuts close earlier.
Some of them do now, particularly with the staffing issues, we've had to make some decisions like that. The typical hours of operation are, you know, four AM, five AM to eleven PM.
Okay, that's it.
All right, thanks, Ben. Ahmad?
I have no comments.
All right, and Nicole?
A lot of my questions were already answered. My, my family owns that pizza place in that plaza. So I, I think I was one of the people that brought up some of the problems in the back. So the, the turning that you proposed looks a lot better as far as the truck route. The parking next to Rite Aid, no one parks there. So, I mean, we can discuss whether or not we're going to ask them to repa, repave that, but personally, I don't think we should ask them to do that if, because it's not really needed. No one parks there. And as far as the loading dock in the back that you're saying towards that restaurant now, I'm not even sure what that's called, keeps changing. But I don't even, you know, you would have to talk to them, but I don't even know that they would need a loading dock because I can tell you that all of our deliveries just come to our back door. It was just, you know, I had brought up the issues in the back with the dips and stuff like that. And the tightness, because sometimes those refuse come closer to that restaurant and then there's a little bit of a tightness there as far as trucks trying to get through or cars or whatever.
You're, you're absolutely right, Nicole. When you have a refuse container right here, it, it creates a tight maneuvering location.
Right.
And by moving that, we're, we're able to increase it to twenty-five feet in width there. You know, our standard axis is about twenty-six feet. So we were trying to, you know, by locating it in this particular location here, that's the flattest portion that has the most benefit to the people on the southern end. We're trying to give everybody an identified loading area for, for the site. So we, we're now going to shift it further here to the south. I don't think it's going to be that big of an issue for somebody to have to walk a couple more steps over to the pizza place.
Right, and I don't, I mean, maybe that restaurant, a couple of people park there, but I'm not even sure that people even park there in that corner. So that might also be completely empty all the time, so.
Yeah, well, one of the benefits of the shared parking agreement, they can park wherever they want on the site. So that gives us the benefit of, of moving a few of those spaces to accommodate a tractor trailer.
Yeah. Um, I, I think, I actually wasn't the one that had the question, but I, I, it wasn't brought up yet. Are you putting in bike racks at all for the Dunkin' Donuts or?
We, we.
I did see that was a comment.
We, we will be.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Because I know that there are kids that come down from some of the houses up and they go to Stewart's and they go to the pizza place and they're on bikes and so, yeah.
Yeah, it's a, it's a fairly dense housing around. It's, it's good for your business, but, but also, that's good.
Yeah, that, that's all I had. Thank you.
Carl, one other thing, since we already brought up architecture, architecture. The Fred Flintstone car with the arrows, is that really necessary?
Yeah, I, I, I wasn't liking that myself either.
It's not a requirement. It was just, it's something that we just put to give some life to the, the building, but it's not a Dunkin' requirement.
Okay, because that, I mean, that may be considered a sign under our zoning and, and an extra.
It's pretty big.
And it's large, so.
That was it.
All right. I think a lot of my comments have also been answered as we went through this. Hours of operation we discussed. So architecture, I guess we could discuss that a little bit more among the board members, but generally like that you're upgrading with some stonework, but a lot of the area Dunkin' Donuts also have more of a hip roof on it or some, or some kind of, versus just the flat roof. So I don't know if you can take a look at that or try to at least match the mall building a little more with a, I guess it's kind of a feel of more of the Dunkin' Donuts out on, where is it? Route nine and Neptune Road. They've done something where it's a flat roof, but, but they have a pair of, a, I don't know if you call it a mansard or whatever, that, that kind of, I know you're trying to reuse an existing building and, but see if you can make something like that.
Yes, we're trying to avoid adding a, like, a roof or, or modifying it too much. Just, we, we have to use the building that we have. And it's a pretty seventies-style brutalist type of architecture with the same finish that is on this building. And putting pediments and roofs and gables kind of just looks a little tacked on because we considered that because we got the comments back from the board.
Well, listen, we are very careful about not spending other people's money. So use your imagination and come up with some ideas, some, maybe some alternatives, you know, a couple of options and let us look at them, you know, we'll, we'll work with them.
Yeah, I mean, just, and we want to just, mainly, we like to hide the HVAC and that's part of, part of why we say this.
We'll, we'll look, we'll look at, trying to incorporate that into the architecture.
Appreciate you.
I mean, both, both Stewart's, yeah, Stewart's on the other, in the plaza have, have a similar type of roof, but I don't know if you can match that or not, but, but it's, I'd like to, like to put the stone on there. Any co, any other architectural comments from board members? If they can go forward, okay, as Peter said, if you give us another alternative, say, for the, for the roof treatments, see where you can, we'll try to choose between the two. And I appreciate you using a vacant building as well. That's a, that's a good thing, so. As you said, we'll, as Peter said, we'll try to make it as best as possible for you. All right.
I move the planning board defer further action on this application. Determined it is incomplete and direct the applicant to respond in writing to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, included but not limited to the following, one through eleven.
Second. Moved in seconded, called to question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. All right.
Thank you very much for your time.
Take it closer and we'll see you in November. Finish it up. Next up, Vertical Bridge AM Tower replacement, Tucker Drive. Is the applicant here or online? Little of both, okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Alec Glad from Cuddy and Fader. I am the attorney for the applicant Vertical Bridge. And on Zoom, I also have Carolyn Gould, who is a project manager from Vertical Bridge, as well as Josh Eblin, who is from GPD Group, who is the project engineer on this application. So just a brief refresher for the board and for any public who may be interested in the application. I was going to go over a little bit of what we're proposing. So Vertical Bridge is seeking amended site plan approval to replace one of the two existing AM radio towers located at the iHeart Media facility at twenty Tucker Drive. This project sites in the heavy industrial zoning district and is nine point nine acres in total. There's a three hundred and thirty-six foot tall guide AM tower as well as a hundred and fifty-eight foot tall guide AM tower. And Vertical Bridge owns both towers and leases the land from iHeart Media. And Vertical Bridge is seeking to replace the taller of the two towers, that being the three hundred and thirty-six foot one. A recent tower inspection disclosed that it's reached the end of its useful life because of age and just needs replacement. And we provided a copy of that structural analysis with our initial submission. And we're not proposing any changes to the shorter of the two towers at this time. So the tower we're proposing to replace is presently a guide tower, meaning that's supported by wires. But we are proposing to replace it with a lattice tower that is self-supporting. And we're doing this for two principal reasons and both relate to environmental impacts. The first reason is that it voids all impacts to the wetlands. If we had to replace the guide anchors, which are presently in the wetlands, it would create a significant amount of disturbance because now bigger concrete blocks are required and this is both a federally and locally regulated wetland. So by doing the lattice option, we'll just cut the guide anchors at grade. Someone will wait out, cut them, and then just leave them in place to basically effectively have no disturbance. And I'd also like to note too that after, since the last meeting, we delineated the wetlands. And in order to avoid placing one of the legs in the wetland, we rotated the tower to avoid that. And we also changed the fence location to track the boundary of the wetland. So nothing is actually proposed in the wetland itself, but we are in the seventy-five foot buffer area and we have applied for the aquatic resource permit. And then the second reason we chose a self-supporting lattice tower is that it's more friendly for birds. They prefer the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service guidance. Says for new tower construction, it should be lattice as opposed to guide. So again, there, we put some thought into this and we think that it, this is the most environmental, environmentally sound solution. So since our August appearance, we did make a supplemental submission. We provided a comprehensive response to comments as well as updated application forms, assigned landowner authorization, a copy of the photo simulation that we showed at the last meeting, which I can pull up again if you would like, and as well as updated drawings and we, which included the seventy-five foot buffer area, where, so you can see the work that we're doing within that buffer. And we are in receipt of the town's comments. So at this point, I was going to turn it over to Josh from GPT Group just to give a AM tower one-on-one quick presentation for the benefit of the board and any public that may be listening and interested in this application.
Yep, sounds good. Thanks. Go ahead, Josh.
Thanks, Alex. Thanks, board, and I'll attempt to share. All right, can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
All right, here's the street view from Google Earth. This is the iHeart Media property, twenty Tucker Drive. This is what you'd see and I'll do my best to give a very high-level overview of kind of what this property is and to a high level, kind of how it works. Just so everyone can understand, the intent is to replace one element, which is the, the tower of the broadcasting station. So twenty Tucker Drive, here's the street view. And then obviously, if we pan up, we can obviously see the two towers. This is the first tower, it's known, known as Tower One. That is the one subject to the discussion and replacement. And off in the distance, you can see Tower Two. So those have been their original applications for this station date back into the nineteen thirties and there's been subsequent updates to that over the years. I think that current license was in its current condition in, I think, nineteen sixty-two or somewhere thereabouts. So here, we're popping back to aerial view and I'm doing this just so that everyone understands kind of what is out there now. If we spin with north up, where I have my marker, if you can see, this is Tower One. That's the main tower for the station. And then to the south is Tower Two. More or less, that's, that's the most of what everyone would notice out there. And then we have the iHeart Media building here to the northwest. In a very high level, how things work is iHeart Media will have what they want to broadcast, whether that's originating in this building or on some other pre-recorded or transmitted station that, that arrives at the building. There's some broadcast equipment in the building and then the broadcast for the station will make its way through coaxial cables out to the equipment at the base of the tower. The station operates on AM frequency fourteen fifty. And the way AM works is the actual tower is irradiating element for the station. So if you think of maybe a guitar, the length of your guitar string dictates what frequency you'll hear. And that is how AM is constrained. That in order to broadcast a certain frequency, you have to have a, a metal object long enough to create that frequency. And that dictates the height of the tower. There are certain mathematical and physical properties that can be edited with some electronics, but that already is in place here because the true wave size for this station would actually be taller than what the tower is there. This is about the, the theoretical limit of how small a tower could be to generate this station. And that's been known for some time and has been modeled with the FCC over many years. Effectively, on-site, your radio station and your broadcast equipment is in the building and some other equipment is at the base of the building. And then things that you might not see on-site, I'll flip to another screen here, are that below grade, there are a hundred and twenty copper radial elements underneath each of the towers. Those are just shallow below grade, but they're very integral to how the station works, to how the antennas broadcast the station. I bring that up just to keep in context what is being requested, which is not replacement of the broadcasting station or the base station equipment or any of the characteristics of the station, the frequency or the power, or its pattern or direction. It's strictly the one element, the, the North Tower. At that point, Alec, I think I'll turn it back over to you unless you have any other questions. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
To you, Mr. Chairman.
Sounds good. Let me go to our virtual Kristen here today.
Yeah, virtual Kristen. All right. Alex already gave a good overview of the changes since the last time we saw this. I know Carol Knapp is on the, on the call and if you have questions for her, but she did appreciate, I believe, the, the wetland delineate, delineation and rotation of the tower. So I think, you know, that really helped. You know, this is on for seeker review, aquatic resource permit review, amended site plan review, architecture to the degree that, that can really be looked at for this kind of a project. But, you know, we wanted to open the public hearing tonight first and then, and, and kind of go from there. But there are not too many comments left. I don't know, Andy, if you have any from engineering?
Yep. Yeah, my, my, my primary interest is in the, in the, the access roads for the cranes and, and what that's going to entail and then subsequently making sure that they get restored after, after they're done.
And Carol?
We discussed that at some length last time about where they're going to go and everything, so that's.
Yeah, and, and we added a restoration plan and I don't know if Josh has anything else that he wants to add in response.
I, I don't know that we can elaborate much more. Ultimately, some degree will be dictated by the size and the company of crane that is contracted to do the work. We've used and modeled the appropriate cranes for the site. We've used and modeled the appropriate cranes for the site and tried to put very realistic sizes and distances onsite, so it is feasible. But ultimately, that will be part of a contracted stubble work.
Okay, thanks. Let me go to Carol, see what, what she has to say about the updated plans. I think that was an improvement. Carol, are you there?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you now.
Okay, very good. I appreciate the thoroughness of the, of the wetland delineation and the report that was provided. So basically, that has satisfied all my concerns. And to be honest with you, they weren't real significant concerns anyway, but you have done a great job moving this, rotating it to stay completely out of the wetlands. I could tell you, you probably won't need waders back there, but you will probably need a machine to get into there. But no, no issues at this point.
Okay, great. Thanks, Carol. All right, this is on for public hearings as well, so I move you open the public hearing for this project?
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Does anyone wish to comment on this project? You're on Zoom or in, oh, we have one signed up in the meeting room.
Okay, Alex, if you wouldn't mind.
And the squires moving over, and then she can come sit down at the. Either sit down, or we have the vertical mic either.
The mic is set up for.
Oh, okay, well, just sitting down is probably better. Either way.
Don't time it yet. Let me sit down for a moment. Okay.
Right, the clock starts.
All right, so dear elected appointed Poughkeepsie public officials, this tower site is within a tenth of a mile from my bedroom window and within 500 feet of 1,000 Cherry Hill residents. Proximity bears on power density and the radiation absorbed within each person's body. In addition to the matters in my prior letter today, note that the Federal 1934 Communications Act requires the minimum power necessary for the communication. While the legislative purpose of that act and its amendment, the TCA Act of 96, is to promote, quote, "promote the safety of life and property," end quote. This is your duty. Minimized power and public safety are intimately related, however, where you have zero information on what is transmitted, how and why. You don't even know whether there is a valid communications purpose for a replacement tower. Indeed, antennasearch.com shows the same paucity of information as the applicant has provided, which is frankly perverse. Per the Public Health Service Act Amendment 354, quote, "The Congress hereby declares that the public health and safety must be protected from electronic product radiation," end quote. You need the FCC transmission license for all operations from the tower site, with all antennas listed, their power gain frequencies, operating equipment, and more, in order to fulfill your respective oaths of office and provide for the health and safety, for the public health safety. Per COVID precedents, prospective health damages supersede financial interests. And per the USDC Court of Appeals decision of 813, which is just almost two weeks ago or so, the FCC has acted in an arbitrary and capricious manner that lacks reasoned explanation in deciding to close and ignore a public inquiry that had manifested vast and profound scientific conclusions. FCC proved that it had applied neither scientific evidence nor reasoning in arbitrarily extending its guidelines from 6 gigahertz to 100 gigahertz. The court said such FCC positions would harm both public health and the environment. The decision rendered all wireless facilities transmitting at frequencies greater than 6 gigahertz unlawful and requiring cessation. A similar decision by the same court in 2019 vacated an FCC order based on proof that the FCC had not performed the required NEPA process for ensuring public health, public and environmental health. However, FCC has not provided, even yet done, that review, which the court had required. Thus, until such time as FCC has obeyed, the federal courts remand and produce a science-based guideline, a NEPA environmental assessment, and more. A moratorium on all new wireless facilities in Poughkeepsie is necessary. The instant application for sight unseen new tower with new and unknown equipment and transmissions is absurd. By law, you must deny this application. I have expressed no matter of mere concern, but solely matters of fact and law. Thank you very much for letting me comment. I've also given Carol some material, and I wrote another letter. I just had to.
Yeah, we've got your letter, so appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. I mean, I, I will mention your, your concern about some of the new cell technol, new technology, cell technology, which is, you know, in the gigahertz range. This is down in the 1450 kilohertz. It's very, very low, very low in the frequency spectrum. And I appreciate that the applicant has mentioned that there's no change to the equipment or transmit power. It's just.
There's no engineering, no full engineering reports that we can look at to verify that. So it's not replaced in time until that's done.
Yep. Any other comments from people on Zoom or in the bill, or in the room? This project?
Again, if you're on Zoom, if you're on a phone, you would need to star six to unmute yourself. I'm not seeing any.
Nothing on?
No.
I move we close the public hearing?
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five to zero. I'll go around the board for comments on this project. Start with Ben. Peter?
Has the applicant represented that there will be no change in terms of the, we have something in writing that says that there won't be any change in the, pardon my lack of science, but the frequency?
I believe that's what was said on the, just tonight, right?
Yeah, they're 1450.
Yeah, yeah.
Not the frequency, but the, the level of transmission.
Intensity of power. No, exactly the same.
Exactly the same.
Yeah, it has to be per the FCC license that they have for this specific site, and it's to a specific frequency, and.
Just for the benefit of all concerned, send us, provide us with a one-sentence letter that says that there will be no change.
Okay. Yeah, I, I can't remember off the top of the head if that's already in, in the application material, but we're happy to provide that.
I mean, I, I think there's a sentence in there that's, it's a, it's a replacement in kind, but I think Peter's right, we, we should probably get something in writing that says that it's the same power and it's not an elevated.
Since the question came up.
Sure, absolutely.
Just so it's on the record.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Thanks, Peter. Anything else? Ahmed?
I think I, I echo the same thing, that there's much concern about the radiation intensity effect on the health of, with the 5G and all this stuff. I know this is lower, but a statement to say that the power frequency, everything is the same, it has been existing for a while and approved, is critical to satisfy.
Yep, absolutely.
All right, thanks, Nicole?
Yeah, the only thing that I had was, there was a comment from, I believe it was the water department, and I know that you guys, that iHeart Radio leases out that building, but that backflow prevention is due. I don't know if that's necessarily their duty to do it and get it certified, but that was one comment that was still kind of lingering out there.
Yes, and we saw that comment, so Vertical Bridge is going to reach out to iHeart Media about that comment.
Yeah, that'd be great. Yeah, and that was really all I other, you know, all I had here, so.
All right, thanks, Nicole.
Yeah.
And my comments, my ham radio background can help understand where you're coming from with the size of the antenna, et cetera. Glad you did the move for the wetlands issue, and explained the, as I said, explained the transmit power and replacement and keeping the same equipment. It was interesting to note that the lattice tower is better for birds. I wonder why that is?
I think it's because they don't fly into the wires unwittingly.
Oh, the guy wire, right, right. Yep, without the guy wires there, and this, this had quite a rat's nest of guy wires.
Yes, yep.
That, between those kind of towers and, and windmills.
My wife would appreciate that.
All right. Um, go ahead.
Yeah, are we doing this?
Yep.
I move the planning board determine that the proposal meets criteria for seeker type two action pursuant to seeker part 617 dot five, C2, and no further environmental reviews required.
Let's, and we'll add this stipulation that the applicant will include a letter.
That's going to be at the bottom of this. I'll put that as number five.
Okay, yep. This is for seeker first. Do I have a second for seeker?
Second.
Moved and seconded for seeker, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero.
I move the planning board grant conditional site plan approval, subject to the following: Respond to the comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, and said responses to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness inclusive of, but not limited, limited to the following, one through five. If you can put something in writing that states that it is the same frequency as the old.
Frequency, but.
It's a separate.
Power. The power.
It's more than just frequency.
Yeah, and power, and.
And power, yep.
There's a lot.
1450 frequency and the, the wattage of the transmitter.
Do you have a second for that?
Second.
Moved and seconded for conditional, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Any architecture to present?
Nope, no, no.
Oh, we had, we had.
I move the planning board grant conditional aquatic resources permit approval for Vertical Bridge AM tower replacement, 20 Tucker Drive, subject to completing conditions of site plan approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Now architectural, is anything to show us from a?
Yeah, I'll pull up.
I mean, do you have that equipment shed? Is that changing or just moving?
Uh, we just have to, to accommodate the shift in the leg, we just have to move it to the north slightly, like, basically, you're just cutting it in half and moving it half over. But there's no proposed changes to the look of that building. They'll just basically slide it up. Do you want me to pull up the?
The tower?
The rendering? Yeah. Just find it.
I mean, it won't be as skinny as the other one. What's the size of the base at this point?
Josh?
Uh, one second, let me get the exact size.
Yeah, one thing I, I do want to note, though, for this, we noted this in our comment response, but because it's under 350 feet, the FAA is now not requiring that it be red and white striped, so the existing tower is painted, this will just be galvanized steel.
That should make it less visible, right?
Yeah, it would be less.
I think so.
You know, planes have to stay about 500.
Yeah, but it will, yeah, there will be, it will be lit, there'll be one at the top, and then others at 200 feet.
Is there still a light on the top, at least?
Yes.
FAA, okay. That, that's good to know.
Sorry, I'm just trying to.
It's also, it's Exhibit D in our package, have you?
Yep. Just took me a second to get there.
Yeah, I've seen it.
Yeah.
Yep. All right, I'll just move, any comments on the architecture? I don't know, we've got it.
Here we go.
Now we got it.
Yep.
Thanks. Replacing existing will be a little less visible, but a little wider at the base. And will we accept architect as presented?
It's not the show, it's easy. But it's acceptable. It's facing.
Second.
It's more Eiffel Tower.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five to zero. All right, good that you're replacing it before it falls down.
Yes. Definitely. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next up is 8 Tucker Drive.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Ken Cazmenta from RR City.
Hey, Ken.
How are you? I just wanted to see if you wanted a full presentation. Our, the real changes from the last time we were in front of the board are really just around the covert crossing and putting the details together for that crossing.
Yeah, that's all we need to see, because we, we've seen the building and all the other stuff. We're just concerned about the wetland impacts and, and what's going to happen to Casper Kill there, so.
Okay, so let me pop this up.
My mother always used to say, "Don't chew your cabbage twice."
So you, you can see it here on screen, correct?
Yes, thank you.
So we, we had put together a phased plan for completion of that crossing. We did meet with Carol and Andy out onsite, talked through some ideas to put it together. We did receive their comments, and there was a couple of things where I think we need to tweak, just to facilitate some of the specifics and the details on how to get it done. But in the end, we're going to replace the existing pipe in its whole, as a whole. We're looking to basically maintain the water level as it is today as best we can, even though the current pipe is below the water, so that we can maintain what has been a condition for a long period of time at this point, and still achieve getting a pipe that functions properly. Part of the thing that we're doing is putting a trash rack on the uphill or upstream side, which doesn't exist today, so that'll give the ability for the property owner to adequately do easy maintenance if there are debris in, in front of the covert there.
Okay.
That's really it in a nutshell.
All right, thanks. Yeah, it is a bit of a mess there, the way it's bubbling up out of the ground and not flowing correctly, so. Thanks. Go to, to Mike there?
Yep, pen's hitting again. So for this one, it's on for seeker review, and then the next step would be for a recommendation to the town board on the zoning district change. If you recall, this would require the town board to rezone the property from.
Back to what?
Business shopping center to industrial, light industrial. And then, you know, once that were done, then it would come back for site plan, aquatic resource permit review, and architectural review. We had hoped that this might be ready for seeker declaration for this meeting, but there's still some information missing. Andy can discuss that a little bit more. So tonight, we're recommending that we just open the public hearing, adjourn the public hearing to November with, and then defer further action with some of the comments that are remaining. It's not too, too many. I know there was one item that Kristen highlighted that she did want maybe some discussion about, which was the, the parking spaces. I guess there's 45 required, they're showing 36 paved, and then they indicate 20 gravel parking spaces. There's quite a bit of area shown as gravel. I guess we wanted to just get an idea of what's, what's proposed for the, that area. But other than that, we were pretty well set. I, in addition to Andy, Carol Knapp is on the phone. You have a letter from Carol, but if you have any questions for her, that's fine.
All right, thanks. Yeah, we're good to get some comments on the, on the paved areas versus the not, so go ahead. Andy, it was yours first.
Yeah, so, you know, they, one of the things that we were looking for were stormwater calculations and the SWIP. The, we've asked them to provide, we, we received calculations and a separate submission prior to the meeting. We reviewed them, and they were, they looked pretty good. Unfortunately, we're missing some soil testing to verify the infiltration rates that are being assumed, as well as the depth of groundwater. Given the close proximity of the, of the stream and the pond and the wetlands in the area, we want to make sure that the required separation is provided, because they are, Um, unfortunately, we're missing some soil testing to verify the infiltration rates, uh, that are being assumed, as well as the depth of groundwater, um, given the close proximity of the of the stream and the pond and the wetlands in the area, we want to make sure that the required separation is provided, uh, because they are they are proposing some underground practices that have minimum separation of groundwater. Um, that's the primary reason that we would like to hold off, um, so we can get that data. Um, everything else is in is in pretty good shape, we do have some comments on the on the culvert replacement plan, in general, it it's a good plan, um, you know, to to raise the elevation of the culvert to maintain that water level is a good, you know, good, a good way to do it.
Okay.
Among some of the comments, we have, one of them is that we want to, before the work starts, we feel it'd be wise for, um, you know, town engineer Carol Knapp, uh, to, uh, to visit the site and and make sure everybody agrees on where that level actually should be set, because it can vary depending on the the time of year. Other than that, um, I guess one other thing I'll mention is there are a couple of light poles shown in some of the the rain gardens, uh, for the site that should be just be relocated, again, that's not a huge deal, so.
It would just, uh.
Okay, that's minor. Uh, I mean, I like, you know, a lot of gravel there is is, it means you have less and less pervious surface to worry about, less impervious.
Yes, but according to the stormwater manual, we have to account for gravel parking as, assume it's pa- it's pavement, it's it's impervious.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
That's interesting.
Okay, because I thought that would infiltrate some and not have a big concern. All right, um, let me go to Carol first. Comments on the wetlands and the culvert. Still out there, Carol?
Actually, it looks like she might not be, although actually, no, I see the cell phone is still on, Carol, are you, I think that was her cell phone, Hanson one zero zero.
Hmm. We can come back to her if she chimes it, chimes in, uh.
Okay.
Ken, can you?
You still there?
Oh, now, oh, now you're there.
Yes, he is.
Now we got you, Carol.
Okay, sorry. Sorry about that, now I have a dog barking dog, let me just.
So, what's your?
Um, I, uh, concur with Andy regarding, um, I do do think it'd be a good idea for Andy and Ken and I and anyone else in the town just to to go out and make sure that we're all on the same page as far as the the, um, the culvert replacement. Uh, I don't see that there should be any permits needed, um, most of the work, uh, as far as the the DEC, it is, uh, above, um, it is a a class C stream, so they don't need a permit, um, as long as the flow is maintained, and it looks like it's under a tenth of an acre, I'm sure it will be. So as long as everything is done properly, there should not be, uh, either a permanent impact or a significant impact, so we just need to to verify that everybody's on board and that everything will be done to maintain and protect. But at this point in time, yeah, the applicant is committed to that and will continue to to tweak that that plan, so we're we're good to go.
Okay, thanks, Carol, I mean, it'd be good to move this along, get, uh, get seeker going here, because I know it has to.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I could for one second, with regard to Andy's comments, um, we we're currently in the process of scheduling in the next week or two, uh, latest, um, we're trying to get it done in the next week, the, uh, field test and and information for that, so that we can confirm that. Um, I won't have that information for the actual submission date, but I will absolutely have it well in time for the meeting itself, uh, so I'm hoping that we can still continue into the October meeting and hopefully provide Andy with the the few pieces he needs, uh, to hopefully get through seeker so we can move on, like you said.
Okay, I think we can do that, Ken, thanks, and I just.
Thank you.
Andy's indicating that yes, he'd be able to, uh.
Yeah, we can accommodate that, I mean, it's it's just a couple of pieces of data that we're missing that needs to be verified, so it, that's that's not a problem for me.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone.
Yeah, no, I have to go back to the town board to get rezone back to what it was, so, all right, um. It is on for public hearing, so I move we open the public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Anyone in the audience wish to comment on this project tonight?
If you're on the Zoom and you wish to comment, again, you can star six if you're on a phone, or just, uh, unmute yourself, raise your hand. Quite a lot of people on the Zoom, but no one seems to be indicating that they would like to speak, so I think we're okay.
All right, we'll have another chance.
Yep. Although also be a chance in front of the town board, so, at at some point, so.
Yeah. And move we, uh, uh, adjourn the public hearing to October twenty first, two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
Is it October or November?
Okay, October, yeah.
October.
No, yeah.
Is it seconded?
Yep.
Um, moved and seconded, call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. All right, go around the board for additional comments, Nicole, start with you today.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't really have, um, too many comments, um, you know, we were just wondering what you were using that gravel area for, Ken, if you could comment on that?
Sure, um, it it is going to be partly, you know, contractors type yard, so there will be some, uh, equipment vehicle potential out there, storage, uh, supplies, that type thing, so pipes might be there, catch basins might be there, that type thing.
All right, that's really all I had, thanks.
Thanks, um, Almat?
No comments.
Peter?
Uh, I think it's a great use, uh, for this, like you said, I remember we were on the board when we changed this from B, uh, IL to BSC, now we're going back the other way. The parking requirement, I mean, this is a, a contractor's building, I mean, I could see if it were a factory where you needed one space for every five hundred square feet, but the fact that they have twenty gravel spaces, I'm not really too concerned about that, because they'll never use them, never.
Contractor.
Yeah.
Right. And Ben?
I agree with Peter, and I just have a question, even though we're deferring it, could it be possible for them to get to get that trailer that's on there off off that property, and this way, when they do the groundwork, that's gone and 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 they can move on, you know, what they have to do, this thing is just.
Little more cleanup, you had that trailer still out there, Ken, I don't know if you have any comments on that?
Well, well, you know, as as you know, this project, we had, uh, a misstep in what we what did in the beginning, and we were, uh, asked to stop doing things, so we have indicated to the client, you know, don't do anything until the board has agreed to let us move forward, um, with, given the sensitivity, we haven't requested or asked him to do any of that. If the board is asking us to remove the the trailer and do any further cleanup, we we would be happy to start differently, but I didn't want to do any of that until we know, in fact, the board's letting us do that, so we don't run into foul with anybody.
Do you want them on the culvert, really, at this point, or?
Maybe not, yeah, maybe, I don't know what kind of weight of truck and stuff it's needed to get that off, out past the the existing culvert that's kind of collapsed there, so.
Yeah, I think.
Maybe it's maybe it's best to wait.
Okay.
Because I know in the interest of keeping this moving, I thought it would help.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
The. Now, what does everybody else think?
Well, I I I think they have a good point, because if if you're getting a a tractor in there to move that out, uh, that could cause further damage, so I don't know that you want to do that.
What do you think, Ed?
I think it'd be great to get that culvert replaced sooner rather than later.
Okay, uh, let's hold off until that's that's corrected, so it doesn't cause more of a a bigger problem there.
One quick question, um, in terms of the gravel parking, uh, you mentioned the twenty, um, twenty spaces, is that indicated anywhere on the on the plan, I I, Kristen did the review on this and I I did not look here.
We we, we don't have a set designated area on there, that was one of her comments, um, if, so we will show on the gravel somewhere where they could be if you want, if the board would like.
Yeah, just so to at least have the the total number, I mean, you, that's more than required, the fifty-six, but, uh, we'll show.
Yeah.
Yeah, they have to be.
Show that you meet the requirement.
You have to show them on the plan.
Yeah, yeah, so we need to see those.
Yeah. All right, and my comments, uh, I think we got everything covered, uh, we talked about the trailers, I think you still had, you had good landscaping to the, uh, Dutchess Rail Trail there to shield that, we talked about that last time. And as Peter said, I think it's a good use to the property to, uh.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
What's that, Carol?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, yes, I, one comment, um, that gate really does need to kept, be kept closed and locked, um, I just drove past there the other day and it was both unlocked and open. So I I did close that, looked in just to make sure that there was nothing going on in there, uh, and it it, uh, you know, nothing had been, there had been no driving in there, but it, uh, it needs to be kept closed and locked, or else we may have some more issues again in the future.
Yeah, make sure there's no dumping going on or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I did inform the building department of that, so they can keep an eye on it as well.
Okay, when I went by, the gate was closed, so.
And I'll I'll remind the owner as well.
Thanks, Ken.
Thank you.
I move the planning board defer further action on this application and direct the applicant to respond to comments in writing of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, included but not limited to the following one through eleven.
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. All right, thanks, Ken, and, uh.
Thank you, have a good night.
Quick turnaround, we'll see you next month.
You got it, I got it.
And Carol, thank you.
And Carol, yes, thanks.
Thanks, Carol.
Okay, next up, Neshwats, lot fifty-three subdivision. All right, let me deal with that.
Hello, um, I'm Eliana Tucker with M. Gillespie and Associates. Um, since the last submission, not much has changed to the layout of the plans, um, as it stands right now, it's one point eight acres in size in the R twenty zoning district, and it was part of the larger subdivision, Wiltsea Estates, I believe.
Yep.
Um, and it's proposed to subdivide the lot to two parcels, each one will have a single family home and be connected to central water and sewer, which I also believe that we have permission to file with the health department.
Okay. I think that was one of the comments, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, um, Eric?
Um, yeah, I would agree, not not too much has changed, they've addressed some of the comments, um, there is a few that still remain, um, some are related to the, uh, the EAF and seeker. Uh, the first one that we had mentioned about, uh, the EA, regarding archaeological sensitivity, we received a letter today, uh, dated yesterday, I think, uh, from the state park, Office of Parks Recreation Historic Preservation, uh, they indicated there's no issue, so number one A can come off the list, that's definitely addressed. Uh, the Blandings turtles, um, it's a fairly standard mechanism way to address it, but we don't have any information, um, similarly with the, uh, the EAF indicates s- some kind of remediation in the area, we don't have any information. And we asked a question about limits of disturbance between the lots, that appears to be proposed, we just wanted to know.
Mm-hmm.
What's it for, um, and show the steep slopes that were shown on the, uh, on the resource, uh, on the resource plan earlier on should be transferred to this one, um, and some notes from the prior Wiltsea Estates. Otherwise, um, if we get those down, I think it should move ahead very quickly, uh, those are our recommendations, for recommending to have open the public hearing and to defer.
So that's what's holding up seeker, you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, just because there's no inform, there's inadequate information on the record.
Okay, I want to make sure all the paperwork's in order. All right, Andy, any, uh, remaining?
Yeah, we have very little, uh, we were looking for the permission to file, sounds like that you've got that now.
Yep.
Um, and then we were looking for some additional information on site distances, which I don't see as being a a too much of an issue.
Yeah, I mean, there's some other lots there that are on a corner, it's hard to see, but this one's not too bad.
Yeah.
Um, other than the steep driveway of one of them. All right, let's, uh, open the public hearing, move to open a public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Any, motion passes five to zero. Anyone in the audience wish to comment on the Neshwats subdivision project? Anyone on Zoom? Not seeing.
Quick scroll.
Yeah, looking through.
No, doesn't appear that anybody is.
When's the, it's the middle date for October, is that?
Twenty-first, I think, or it's going to be.
For October is next Monday.
Next Monday.
Next Monday.
Think you'll be able to.
Yeah.
Get some stuff together to finish, finish this up.
One new person on a cell phone, I just want to say it once again, if you're on a cell phone and you need to unmute yourself, it's star six to unmute, um, just in case that person happened to.
Yeah, in case you want to comment on the Neshwats subdivision. All right, we'll, uh.
Okay.
See if we can turn that around, I move we adjourn the public hearing to October twenty first, two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. And we'll go around the board for some comments, Ben?
Nothing.
Peter?
Uh, yeah, just getting back to the, you know, we all, uh, understand the EAF mapper.
Yep.
Casts a wide net, but at least you have to respond, I mean, say, look, I'm innocent, you know, just a a quick letter, you know, because you recognize that, so, I mean, that's just some simple paperwork, so.
Yep. Yeah, we already started preparing it as well, so.
Okay. Give that invite a little, and Almat?
No comments.
And Nicole?
No comment.
Myself, um, only comment I have is when they tell, tell when he goes to construction, try to keep as many mature trees as possible.
Okay.
I hate when you get new lots out there and you just clear cut and it's.
Yeah.
And then you don't have shade in your lawn. All right.
Ready?
Okay.
I move the planning board defer further action on this application, determine it's incomplete and direct the applicant to respond in writing to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, included but not limited to the following one through nine.
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The trees, trees reminded me of, you know, as I was looking at a garden at another parcel over the weekend, and there had to be three hundred year old trees on there, so they, they did not cut them down. All right, next up is East Dale Village, number fifteen. Welcome, Jeff.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, good evening, uh, board, and, and thank you again for, uh, for allowing us to continue, um, our presentations with the board about this project, um, can, uh, share my screen if that's okay?
Yeah, that'll be great. Let's see what you.
Thanks for firing that up before I saw you come online, yeah, that's good.
Okay.
All right, can you see the screen, we're in good shape?
Okay, right.
So again, yeah, fifteenth site plan amendment, and this is really fairly straightforward, it's a, um, uh, some modifications to the E one building, including, uh, change in use, uh, instead of it being a multi-use residential and commercial building, it's really multi-use, um, uh, retail, restaurant, and an inn. Just to to kind of orient you as, uh, as to where we are, E one is at the corner of East Dale Avenue North and, uh, and Route forty-four, forty-four is across the, uh, across the bottom here, everybody knows where Rossi's is, that's A one, this will be across the street from, uh, from Rossi's is the the proposed location. Um, and just to, again, an idea of, uh, of the streetscape along East Dale Avenue, um, this, uh, uh, corner here is the E one building, the, uh, the restaurant, and you can see E two, E three, and E four, which, uh, we've all looked, certainly looked at E four in the past, and look at, we'll look at E two and E three a little later, uh, tonight in the architectural review. And this is that elevation from the, uh, from East Dale Avenue into this, uh, this three-story, uh, this three-story structure. Um, and just to point out again, some of the, um, the architecture is easier to understand some of what's going on than perhaps the site plan, but this lower corner here is a separate, uh, separate entrance into a separated retail space. where there's wine and provisions being sold. This is the main entrance at the corner to the, to the restaurant space, and then you have banquet and some dining upstairs, and then the inn rooms on the, on the third floor. And I'll show some more details about that in a minute. To zoom in on the, on the E one building, really, the only change that happened here, and it was, seemed kind of inconsequential, I think, to the architect, but caused us a bit of consternation, is this corner right here was expanded. This became the, the private entrance for inn patrons, so they enter in this back. And when it expanded, it landed on top of a catch basin, which caused all the utilities to have to change back there because it's a, it's a real, it's a real mess. So, the drainage changed, the water changed, the sewer changed, and so it's, I have a screen to show you, but really, it was not a lot of square footage there, but, but, but caused a lot of, a lot of engineering changes on the site. But the rest of the building is really the same as, as previously viewed and previously, previously approved. And here, again, just to give you an idea of all the, all the changes, this catch basin right here was down in this corner, and it really just had to move out here. There was, actually, the catch basin was here, there was some striped area of pavement that wasn't a parking spot, but it really was to allow the drainage to get into that, that catch basin. But we had to add a curb here and get the water to run into that corner, drainage got reoriented, and all the sewer lines and the grease trap lines and the water lines changed, and some of them are sleeved now for protection because of Health Department, so it was a, there's a lot, there's a lot, there's not, there's nothing there, but there's a lot there, is the, is the answer to what, what really happened. And again, just to take you back to the site, the site plan, to explain all these arrows as entrances here on, on this building, I showed you these two entrances in the corner for the, for the separate retail sales in this corner. Main entrance here at the corner of Eastdale Avenue and forty-four. Doors that take you out onto the plaza area, the patio area. This is, again, the, the separate access. This is staff access in the back into the kitchen areas. And then there's also stairs here which take you up onto the, to the, to the second floor. And here is the, here's the floor plan, first floor. Again, back to the, back to the retail area, restaurant, and, and bar area. Kitchen is back in, back in this corner. And, and over here are stairs up to the, to the, to the outdoor deck. We have a second floor open deck area here. Indoor, again, event space, private dining area. This, of course, is open below, it's really a two-story, clear story to the, to the, as you walk into the, to the front of the, the restaurant. And then the, the third floor with the, with the rooms, five suites. A one, two, three, four, five. And then there's also a separate third floor guest roof deck overlooking the, the roof deck below. That's part of the, part of the outdoor portion of the, of the, of the restaurant. And this is the, the profile from looking on forty-four into the site, you can see that, that deck area here. It's part of, part of the, the restaurant. The third floor deck area just for the, for the inn guests is here. This front portion is the, showing the hotel rooms stretching back here, and really just this area here is the, is the banquet space on the second floor, and it's all restaurant on the, on the first floor and kitchen in the back. And there's, there, again, those are the stairs leading up to the, to the deck. So again, fairly straightforward, I guess the only other thing that I needed to add was, last time we were here, you approved the E four building, the restaurant. The final architectural drawings came in, we've submitted for a building permit, and the building got four hundred and eighty-nine square feet smaller, so we need to align the site plan with the, with the building plans, and so we're asking you to also consider approving that now. Most of that change was the basement got smaller, three hundred and nineteen square feet. We're in the basement, so you can see how, how the building shrunk just a little bit, but it's really not, not enough to notice looking at it. And so we've, to keep the square footage consistent site-wide, no increase, no decrease, the building I, which is still kind of in the pre-design phase, we've programmatically increased the square footages on, on that building, so it's still a match site-wide, and again, asking you to, to consider review and approval of that. And I think that's all.
Alright, thanks, Jeff. Eric? Or say you.
Pretty nominal change, just for the inn use, which is an interesting new use at Eastdale Village. So, we had some minor comments to adjust to the plan. You adjust some of the changes discussed tonight. So, we were recommending that the board hold a public hearing, find, find Seeker consistency, and approve it if you're inclined. I guess one question I'd ask for Jeff would be, were there, there were some utility changes and such? Were there any other, I didn't see any other revision clouds on the document for parking, layout, landscaping, lighting? Was there anything in the application that, that the board should be aware of, other than this change to E one and two?
There was that one, that one piece of curb changed, and the rest were the utility changes.
Wow, okay. Alright, thanks. Alright, thanks, Eric. Andy?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll follow my sword on this one. Apparently, we looked, there's one too many in site plan amendments for us to review this, this time around. We have fully reviewed the plan, but comments three through eight, I think we were looking at the wrong plan set, so you can disregard those, that, those, those comments on our, on our, on our letter. I did review the plans with Eric from Insight this afternoon. We fully reviewed their changes on the fifteenth amended site plan. And, you know, the most important thing is that the, the Health Department be made aware of it because it is getting pretty congested back there, and as, as Jeff said, there's some sleeving required to adjust for reduced separations because it is so tight back there. So, I want to make sure they're aware of that.
Alright, thanks. This is on for a public hearing, I believe. Should I move, open the public hearing?
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Anyone on the Zoom call or in the room that wishes to comment on this project tonight?
If you're on the Zoom, please unmute yourself or raise your hand. I do see a couple of neighbors' names are familiar, but.
So no one's looking to comment tonight on this?
Does not appear so.
Alright. I move we close the public hearing?
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Let's go around for comments, Nicole?
Yeah, I didn't really have any comments, I just noticed that that restaurant that's coming in, there's also one in London. Is it the same, is it the same owners? It's a, it's a very well-known French restaurant in London, same name, no?
Not that I'm aware of.
There's no correlation?
They didn't tell me if they'd were, but that's, that's great.
Alright, yeah, I was just curious. But, yeah, I think that's, that's going to be very nice to have a little in there, especially when you have all those apartments back there and, you know, if any relatives come and want a place to stay close, that'd be great for, for that, so, yeah.
Yep. And Ben?
Just like to make a reservation for two in the restaurant as soon as I can.
Can I, can I, which, which room would you like?
That, that corner one looks pretty good.
The corner one, right, right, that's what everybody wants.
I think it's great.
Thank you.
Alright, Peter?
Eric, give a, a comment about a response from the county. Did we get a response from the county?
Yes, tell if there was a matter of local concern.
Just to refresh my memory, you're still going on the east side? You're still going to Fourth Ward Sewer?
Yes, it all, it all pumps to the pump station just at the foot of the nursing home, goes over the hill.
You're going to the pump station by Wardburg. Have you done the boring yet?
Oh, yes, that was done, that was done before we paved, that was done, is it last summer or two years ago now? The time kind of right, right runs together.
Lastly, you know, eleven, twelve years ago, when the town had a new master plan, they came up with the town center, I never thought anybody would ever be able to, to pull it off. And I'm just so amazed, you know, I've been watching, it's like a movie set. You know, the design, the, all the different features, the architectural features that you've incorporated there, it's just extraordinary, so, it's great.
Thank you, and I, and I, you know, look, I, I've said this before, and I, and I mean it with, with every word I say, this, this could not have happened by our sheer will alone. It was, it's taken everybody in this town, the volunteers, administration, the consultants, working with us on this to really make it come together, so thank you to all of you to, to help pull this together, thank you.
Amad, you're very nice, when is the grand opening?
Yeah, good question. So, we're, we're trying to break ground on that block late this fall. So, eighteen months, I would think, is, is probably about the right timeframe?
Got a lot of construction going on out there, so.
There's a lot going on.
Alright, was there, I guess the comment I had, there was an issue with an inn being, I guess, so that parking lot there will serve the inn customers. What about this, this issue of meals that came up?
So, it was interesting, I, I thought it was an interesting interpretation of the definition, and I read it, I, I, I literally read the definition twenty times to try to, to try to understand the different ways it could be interpreted. I, I guess I see the interpretation of the definition that meals are part of, of being an inn. My, my thinking is that when it was originally written, the, the definition was meant to include that having meals still keeps it an inn, right, that doesn't, doesn't, isn't, isn't going to dispositive. But either way, we understand that, 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 yes, meals are part of the definition of, of the inn. Meals are available, certainly room service is available in these rooms, and so that, to that extent, yes, meals are part of it, but it, but it's not an intent to provide free meals to the guests here as part of this, and I, which I, again, I don't think was part of the, part of the intent, but that there are the availability for meals in the rooms.
And you got a whole street of restaurants and Rossi's and everything else there, so. As long as that satisfies the, the zone administrator.
Okay.
I move the planning board find that the Eastdale Village fifteenth amendment site plan involves incremental changes to the Eastdale Village project of notable magnitude and scope that are non-significant and consistent with the previous seeker findings adopted March fifteenth, two thousand eighteen, and amended September seventeenth, twenty twenty, as modified by the proposed Eastdale Village application received August thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero.
I move the planning board grant conditional amended site plan approval for the Eastdale Village fifteenth amended site plan subject to the following. Respond to the comments of all reviewing departments and agencies. Set responses to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness included but not limited to the following, one through ten.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero again. And you kind of went through all the architecture with us as you, do you have anything more to say about that, Jeff?
Uh, I, you know, again, I, I, just to, I can go through the quickly.
We kind of saw it all, just about material.
Sorry, I'll just grab my, my notes here for a second so I get the, get the colors right.
Doing the Hardy, Hardy board and stuff still.
We have all, all the material. We, I think, I think everyone here has seen it.
Yeah, right. Yes, staying, staying with the Hardy materials, Hardy trim, the, the corner building will have be the iron gray. And then the fabric, fabric awnings on the side. Again, the front part of the building, it stays the iron gray. And then we go to the pearl gray siding and gray slate trim. Again, part of that same palette of colors we've been looking at on the, on the site. The, this is the rear looking into it, again, the same gray slate and pearl gray that wrapped around from the roof of the fore side. And the pieces of the, of the Eastermost side that you see, again, the same Hardy plank, pearl gray, gray slate, and, and then iron gray on the, on the front portion of the building, so they really stay consistent.
Are you showing any other, any of the other buildings?
E, E two and E three, which are, again, the, the kind of the sisters here in between E one and E four, and they really are, really work as a mirror of each other, between, with the breezeway in between. E, and here they're the same. The, the siding with these is the Arctic white, and the trim is the pearl gray with a little bit of Woodstock brown down below, which you can see on the, on the elevations. And this way shows the, the E two building, you know, all, all three of the visible sides. Again, the one side not being, you can't, you can't see any part of it. And it's the same with the, with the E three building, same colors, same, same virtual layout.
And any, and the changes to the E four was basically interior, you said, removing some?
Yes, yes, it's a, it's a little smaller, but there's no, there are really no architectural changes proposed on that.
Great, any comments from the gallery here? Looks good to me, as you, as all the architecture has been out there, so I move we accept architecture as presented.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff, and we'll see you back here shortly. Couple housekeeping items here to adjourn. Arlington Farms, Malabar, I move that we adjourn the public hearing to October twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. And Stewart Shops on South Road, I move that the planning board adjourn the public hearing to October twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. And at this time, I move that we allow public comment on other agenda items tonight and limit those to no more than three minutes.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Is there anyone in the audience or?
Jeff, would you mind, I'm not sharing your screen for just a minute?
It's a star.
Anyone on the Zoom call wish to comment on any other of the remaining items on tonight's agenda?
Again, if you're on the phone, there's one person I see on the phone, it's a star six to unmute.
Alright, seeing none.
Mr. Chairman, I may be interested in commenting on McDonald's.
Okay, yep. Zach, go ahead, go, take your name and go ahead with your comment.
Sure, this is Kevin Langen. I'm one of the partners with the South Road Crossing Project. First of all, I just want to say, very excited about this addition to the corridor. I think it's going to do great things. And just wanted to remind the board during our approvals about the cross-access into Hudson Plaza.
Yep. Alright. Thanks, Karen.
You're welcome. Thanks for giving me some time.
No problem.
Yeah, we did get your email today as well, Kevin, and that was distributed.
Anyone else on the call wish to make comments?
Not seeing any, I see one person who's unmuted, but Pam, I don't know, that's just.
Pam, do you have any comments on anything? You're not muted at the moment. Now you're muted. Pam, do you have any comments on anything? You're not muted at the moment. Nope, now you're muted, so I guess not. Well, uh, I move we resume the meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Call to question. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Welcome, Eastdale.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll, uh, share my screen again if that's okay?
Take a step back to fourteenth site plan.
Step back. Yes, so, um, electric vehicle, um, charging stations. And just to, you know, just real quickly, I just wanted to, to, you know, you may be aware of this, but, you know, what the world is saying about electric vehicles, some of the largest car companies in the world. Volkswagen, half of their sales expected to be battery electric, um, by, by twenty thirty, and by twenty forty, a hundred percent of its new vehicles is zero emission. Number two carmaker, Toyota, seventy new models by twenty twenty five. You're talking, you know, really, really three model years from now. Uh, number three, Daimler, from twenty twenty five onwards, all newly launched vehicle architectures will be electric only. And customers can have an all-electric alternative for every model a customer makes. Number four carmaker, Ford, twenty-two billion dollars in electrification through twenty twenty five. Um, I do a little add for them, there are, the Mustang Mach-E is available now, the E Transit, the all-electric version of their best-selling van debuts this year. And the F-150 Lightning, the best-selling truck in America since forever, uh, arrives spring twenty twenty two. So, they're, they're big into the, uh, into the electric, uh, electric world. Honda, forty percent of its stateside lineup, electric or hydrogen fuel cell by twenty thirty, climbing to a hundred percent by twenty forty. General M six, General GM, all-electric future, thirty new global vehicle, electric vehicles by twenty twenty five. Again, that's three model years from now. BMW, fully electric by the end of the decade, mini-brand, only self, uh, sells, will sell battery-powered cars by the early twenty thirties. And it goes on and on. Um, Bloomberg estimates, uh, uh, that EVs to be fifty-two percent of total US passenger vehicle sales in twenty thirty-five, rising to at least sixty-one percent in twenty forty. And then what are the states doing? California, ten percent of the, uh, the, the national vehicle market, an executive order, all new passenger cars and trucks sold in the state must be emission-free by twenty thirty-five. New York adopted essentially the same rules, but it's not an executive order, it's actually adopted legislation. All new passenger cars, light trucks, off-road vehicles, sold in, sold in the state, zero emission by twenty thirty-five. Um, we don't have an option about this. Um, this, uh, this change is coming, um, and we need to, uh, we need to prepare for it. Uh, we're in a, in a kind of an interesting situation. Because we're mobilized for construction, it's the right time for us to be planning and installing, uh, vehicle chargers, uh, right now. So, working with, uh, with NYSERDA, the New York State Energy Research and Development Authority, uh, and Central Hudson Gas and Electric, uh, we are looking to establish charge stations throughout the site. And what I, what I've presented in the, in the plans is really kind of the first phase. There are some areas that, uh, we'll, we'll probably need to grow into in the future. But, uh, right now, we're looking at, at about a hundred new charging stations throughout the commercial and residential parking fields. And then also under these programs, installing infrastructure to allow us to upgrade the charging stations, uh, as the technology changes and as, uh, as demand, uh, demand increases. And I, again, I just, uh, a, a short lesson on, uh, electric vehicle charging stations, to take just a minute of your time. There are three basic types. What's called level one, uh, it's kind of takes a standard residential plug, a dedicated twenty amp service. Uh, really, if you have an, an exterior, um, outlet, it's probably a, a twenty amp service, may or may not be dedicated, but it'll work. So, that charges at approximately five miles per charge hour using today's battery technology. So, what that means is, if you traveled forty-five miles, you're going to require about a nine-hour charge in a level one charger. Level two, it's a thirty-amp service, uh, specialized plug, and those are generally available and generally consistent across the industry. Um, about fifteen miles per charge hour. So, again, that same forty-five mile travel, you can charge in, uh, in about a three-hour time. And then level three, they're also called the, uh, the DCFCs, direct current fast chargers. Um, they range fifty to a hundred amp service and typically a full charge in under thirty minutes. Uh, those are fast fast. That's what you see, um, uh, particularly at some of the Tesla charging stations. Those are all DCFC chargers, um, kind of a different animal than what, uh, we're proposing right now. We're in the level two market is the, is what we're installing throughout the site. And, uh, I've shown two kind of typical, uh, units here that we're looking to install. Um, the one on the, um, pointer back up here. Uh, this, this is more in the, in the commercial area, and then this, uh, this unit's more in the, in the residential area. Um, these units may change a little over time, again, as, uh, as the models, uh, the models change, but that's kind of our typical, uh, that we're looking to install on the, on the site.
So, you haven't negotiated with Tesla yet for some?
We've, uh, not negotiated with Tesla. Tesla is, uh, right, again, it's, it's, it's kind of a different animal. Um, but there are other, again, places where you can get, uh, the level three DCFC chargers. Um, and, uh, Tesla can plug into those just as anything else can. Um, uh, but, uh, um, it's funny, they want, they want those, those parking spaces right out front and dedicated. We don't really have that kind of location.
Yeah, that's kind of a setup.
Right, right here. So, again, the, the general areas, we're looking at behind, uh, buildings, um, uh, A, B, and C for, uh, in the commercial core. Um, we have, uh, have a number located back behind buildings two and three, and the residential, uh, residential area. Uh, we have a whole set around the community center. And then on the other side of the street, our, our initial area is behind the first building, building eighteen, and the, and mail building, MB two. We have, uh, have charges proposed down in that area. And again, I got blowups here of each of these areas. If you want to kind of look at, uh, um, each of them or have questions about them, I can go through.
Yeah, we, we have them in our packets too.
Sure, sure. And then a typical installation detail, just so it's how, how they, how they go on the ground, so this is the road or the curb. Um, and then you have, you know, two bollards.
Still seeing the, uh.
Yeah, we're just seeing the site plan right now. Uh-huh. Oh, it hasn't changed at all for the last couple of, uh.
Right. If you've been showing others, uh, we haven't too.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not sure why they, okay, so they're installed, um, there's, uh, the station, uh, is set, uh, about, um, um, eleven inches off the back of the curb, but it's got, uh, two bollards in front of it, uh, offset, um, it's set between the two, uh, bollards offset, uh, uh, behind the curb as well to protect the unit itself from getting, uh, from getting hit.
And there's that, is there different types of units or just that you're proposing or just that?
Just those, those two types, and again, it's still not showing, but those two types of units are the two that we're, uh, we're, we're considering at, uh, at this point.
I did see two in here somewhere.
Yes.
All right. Thanks, Jeff. Uh, go to Eric, staff recommendation?
Uh, we only had a couple of binary comments, and, uh, we're recommending to waive the public hearing, secret consistency, and a conditional approval. Um, I, I, there were a couple of questions in the comments, really questions, not comments, but, you know, about the distribution of EV charging stations. I guess Jeff mentioned, eventually you're go, you're going for around a hundred, right now they're showing, uh, forty on one side and about, uh, I think it was ten on the other.
Uh, Eric, I just started, just to be, those, uh, each of those red dots is really two stations. One station has two ports.
Right.
So, when I say it's a hundred, it's really double the number of dots you see on the map, and I apologize if that wasn't clear.
Thank you.
Good point. All right, I think Andy has some comments. Anything else? That's all. Andy?
Yeah, um, so our, our primary comment has to do with parking. Uh, we, we saw that you, you're planning to allow anyone to park there, not dedicating these to EV charging. I think it, it's important to make it clear to people using the site that the, the station, the, the parking spaces are available to anyone, not just for EV vehicles. Um, just to avoid any kind of confusion. Um, and then I guess I just, as far as the different charging, types of charging stations, are you proposing, are you, are you undecided in the type? And the, the chargers that you're using, are you actually installing both types of chargers?
We're installing both types, and, uh, again, the one in the, the, the commercial is different than the one in the residential, just, uh, just different, little, different look, little different. The, and the, uh, the operate really the same, but it's just, uh, a little different, uh, of a, um, uh, equipment. Um, and again, I, that, and they could change in the future. This is, you know, kind of a test drive for us on this, this, this equipment as well.
That's it, that's all.
Great, thanks.
Just, uh, Carl, I, I admitted one point. Um, I mean, one of the comments invited the board to discuss the, uh, the fact that there are enclosures proposed for the, uh, for the units and for the meter banks, uh, which we thought was, was a great improvement visually. Ordinarily, I know the board likes to see screening of, of electrical units like this. We thought that it was unnecessary, but I wanted to invite the board to discuss that and, and, and make a determination that can be applicable here. We have noticed in other locations, uh, the meter, the separate meter banks of meters and stuff.
Yeah.
Someone who knows, and the fact that these are actually enclosed, we think is a great asset.
I was just saying, my only, and I saw the comment, my only request is that, uh, we have no issue with, with getting cut sheets to, to you and to Andy to review. Um, because this is electrical and this is a site civil plan, there's just, so if I can get the cut sheets to you but not have them on the plan, that would be my only preference in terms of how it gets reviewed by the, by staff, so, okay, thanks.
That's fine. All right, um, I move we waive the amended site plan public hearing for this program.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Call to question. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Let's, uh, go around the board for additional comments. Uh, Peter? Ben?
No, uh, no, not really. Just a question.
My, your mic closed.
Plan, I'm sorry. Obviously, you got a lot of these planned, and the technology is most likely going to change. Right now, you don't have a big percentage of EVs available to use them. Is it going to be easy to convert to a, a newer type that'll charge faster and quicker once, once you have the base, you know, power there and everything?
Yeah, I, again, I, I think, I think a couple of things will happen. One is, battery technology is going to continue to improve. Um, uh, but I, but the, the way that the juice gets from the equipment into the car is going to stay the same. Um, again, the, the, that's in the, in the level two range. We may see more of a change to the level three chargers. It's a much more expensive way, uh, it's a much more expensive charger. They're probably ten times as expensive as the level two chargers, uh, so it's very, uh, it's very expensive to install one of those. That price may come down, um, and right now, there, the, you know, the level three chargers are much rougher on the battery than the level two chargers. So, there's some question about, you know, what does that really do, ultimately do to your battery life? That'll change as well, and acceptance of the level three chargers will change. So, part of what, again, it's a, it's a, it's a bigger wire, it's more juice flowing faster. So, part of what we're doing with Central Hudson is installing enough infrastructure so we can upgrade from level two chargers to level three chargers in the future. And that's part of their, uh, part of their program. We have, um, uh, again, dual conduits installed, so in the future, we can just pull the wire, don't have to dig to do some of that work. But that's, yeah, it's a, it's a great question, right?
Yeah, it's, it's a big concern. I mean, only Te, I mean, mostly Teslas are the ones that deal with that, you know, big in-rusha current and the heat associated with it, and you have to dissipate that heat. And a lot of, a lot of, uh, issues with that.
Right, but you're also, you're driving, you don't really want to sit somewhere for three hours and charge, so, like, these are, these are more designed, either you live there and charge overnight, or you're at work and charge for a few hours, and so, yeah.
So, that's good residential and, and a restaurant or wherever you. All right, um, Peter, let's see, you said my word. Um, Ahmed?
I say, I commend you about doing this. I mean, this is a, a nice move and a investment, I think, if you wanted, as the future, like you said, is changing in that direction. So, is this available as, uh, free for residential, or you plug it into a meter and then?
Right. You will, you will pay, right? It's, uh, it's not, it's not free. And, uh, that's, uh, part of the investment that New York State has made to this program, uh, enables the, uh, enables us to really only have to charge for the power instead of trying to have to roll all of the investment into the, uh, into the meter charge. So, but it really just becomes, again, the, the cost of, of the power you actually use to, to fill.
Okay. And also, there is probably dedication and open where the charging sites are, like, uh, to her, the, the the parking place where the charger is, is open to anyone to.
Yes.
It's going to c- create some conflict.
You know, there's, right, so it has the potential to create conflict, um, uh, and, uh, as parking always does, right? That's, uh, so that's not, that's, that's not new. Um, the, um, we're installing many more than demand really needs for the, for the, you know, for, for five, eight, maybe as many as ten years, I think, before we're going to have to have all this demand. We're installing them now because now is when we're, when we're building out. Uh, so, the, it's interesting, the software, um, uh, with these things enables you to, um, you know, kind of control if people are staying plugged in but not, but their, their charge is done, so you make them move so that somebody else can come in and charge. So, there are, there are, there are ways to control that demand for these, so they're not being, uh, not being hogged, they're not being, uh, misused. Um, and, uh, you know, it's a, it's, there's a potential for that in the future, but we're trying to, to overcome that with, with sheer volume.
But also the parking distribution maybe will alleviate some of that because.
The fact that we've got them spread around, you mean, it's a, yes, absolutely.
Yeah. Thanks. Uh, Nicole?
I don't have any comments.
Ahmed's my comment too, that, you know, make sure, I don't know if there's some kind of sign on the unit or whatever it is that, because people are going to pull up and see and say, oh, I shouldn't park there. And, uh, as Andy said, some, some way to avoid confusion, that you have enough of them that people can, but we don't want to have, you know, parking constrained for the, for the village.
Right.
Because there's fifty spot, or a hundred spots that can't suddenly, you know.
Right.
That people don't see as usable, so. Um, is there any kind of, or right now, there, and in the future, would you see it as restriction, restricted at all, or?
Uh, I, yeah.
Parked space, or right now, it's, it's a lot more stuff.
Certainly the commercial areas, I don't, uh, I don't really see them being, uh, being restricted. Um, uh, the residential areas, you know, that there may be some restrictions, uh, just in the future, but.
I mean, most of the residential areas are numbered, right?
Right.
So, however you control that with the residents to, to figure that out. All right, it's, uh.
To tell you from my experience with, uh, we had like three charging sites at IBM, and they have like, if, if you, if you're parking and you're not charging, because it's three sites only, then you get a ticket.
Yes, yeah, right.
That's, that's one way to do it, but, uh.
Right.
I'm not sure.
So, but if you have more, then you might not have that conflict.
Right.
Yep, that's, I think that's the idea he's doing, but. Yeah, the, more electric cars are coming, so that's, uh, I guess what's, I don't think there's enough lithium on the planet to make everything electric, but, uh.
Right, so now, but now, now they're looking at a, at a sodium ion battery that doesn't, so it doesn't require lithium. It's a little, uh, it's not quite as, not quite as efficient, but it's also not quite as heavy, interesting, uh, so, yeah.
There's lots of sodium in it.
Lots of sodium.
Okay. There's new technology coming away, coming all the ti- time, so.
Yep, yep.
All right.
By the way, uh, okay. I move the planning board find the environmental effects of the proposed EV charging station amendments are de minimis relative to the previous review of the Fourteenth amended site plan, and that the planning board reaffirms its July fifteenth, twenty twenty one, secret determination of consistency with the previous secret findings for the Eastdale Village project adopted March fifteenth, tw- two thousand eighteen, as amended September seventeenth, twenty twenty.
Second.
Moved and seconded. For secret. Call to question. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero.
Move that the planning board grant conditional amended site plan approval for the Eastdale Village Fourteenth amended site plan inclusive of the EV charging station amendments, subject to the following, one through four.
Second.
And would I, may I add, uh, you know, some kind of signage or whatever to figure out, so it's not confusing for, I don't know, however, however you want to work that, some meth, some method. Um, you agree to that?
Yep.
Okay, and the second again?
Second.
Uh, call to question. All is in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. And, uh, I move we waive our architectural review for the EV charge stations.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Call to question. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero again.
Thank you.
Good luck with that project, Jeff.
Thanks very much, we'll see you soon.
Yep. Next up is McDonald's on South Road.
Good evening, everyone.
Who's on for this?
Keith Brown.
Keith?
Keith Brown.
Okay.
Shall I proceed?
Yes, please proceed to your presentation.
Thank you, uh, honourable members of the Poughkeepsie Planning Board, my name is Keith Brown of Bryan Almond Del Rio. Um, we're located five thirty eight Broad Hall Road, Suite three oh one West, Melville, New York, one one seven four seven. I'm here this evening on behalf of McDonald's Board in connection with their application for site development plan approval regarding the proposed new McDonald's restaurant located at twenty five eighty five South Road in Poughkeepsie, New York. By way of background, on May seventh of this year, we attended a pre-app meeting with the Planning Board Chairman, Planning Board Commissioner, Town Zoning Administrator, and Representatives of other town agencies. As a result of that meeting, McDonald's agreed to rotate the building one hundred and eighty degrees so the drive-through service windows no longer face South Road. On August seventeenth of twenty twenty one, we filed our site development plan application with the Town Planning Department, and on August twenty seventh, we filed our expert traffic report prepared by Atlantic Traffic and Design. This property is located in an unused portion of the parking lot in the Hudson Plaza Shopping Center on South Road, also known as US Route Nine in the town. And, uh, Tomko, you wanna share your screen and put up the, uh, the site plan, please? The site is located on the west side of South Road in between Hudson Harbor Road and River Crest Road. The Hudson Plaza Shopping Center has existed since the early nineteen seventies, and its current tenants include Price Chopper, Town Vital Shop, Hudson Plaza Wine and Spirits, along with an existing pad site building, which was previously used as a bank, and it's located just to the north of our proposed pad site. The proposed McDonald's will be a standalone pad site located across from the Price Chopper and just to the south of the aforementioned bank building. Currently, the site of the proposed McDonald's is an empty, underutilized parking lot. McDonald's tends, intends to develop this site with a four thousand five hundred and eighty seven square foot, forty-four seat, state-of-the-art McDonald's restaurant with a side-by-side drive-through and related parking and signage improvements. As will be discussed by our project engineer, Mr. Tomko Lamb, and our traffic expert, Mr. Ethan Shikowski, McDonald's proposes two entrances and exits at the north side of the least area, and one right turn in entrance at the southeast corner of the least parcel. All movements will be in a counterclockwise configuration around the site with parking on, on the permit of the least area. We have reviewed the town agency comments with respect to the site layout, engineering, and design, and plan to respond to them in further submissions. As will be discussed further by Mr. Bill Weissgover, McDonald's representative, the current orientation is superior to the prior orientation, which now has access, which now has the, the access drive facing the main corner of the intersection. In fairness, Bill was not the construction manager who chose the original orientation. If we were to orientate the building facing South Road, it would make it more difficult to comply with the town code setbacks. The current orientation we submit allows us to move the building back and to have all the setbacks align and better conform with the town's bulk requirements. It also allows us to orientate the building parallel to Hudson Harbor Drive, which serves as the main southern driveway of the shopping center, and will provide green space on the east side of the building facing South Road, as you can see on the site plan. With respect to the drive-through, the side-by-side drive-through will support and improve the operation of the fast food restaurant that is necessary to help McDonald's cater to the demand for drive-through and contactless food service. The proposed side-by-side drive-through consists of two menu boards, two pre-brows boards, a pay window, and a pickup window. It's more efficient than a traditional drive-through, which has one menu board, a pay window, and a pickup window. The pre-brows menu boards give McDonald's customers time to acquaint themselves with McDonald's expanded menu before placing an order, which in turn helps reduce order time, wait time, and drive-through queuing. The menu boards allow McDonald's to process customers quicker by taking two orders at once, which will in turn reduce the amount of cars queuing in the drive-through lane. The ordering system consists of a state-of-the-art sound dampening system, which operates at a lower decibel level and adjusts to ambient sound levels. In addition, the menu boards remain static, only changing with mi- with menu changes. Moreover, Ethan Shikowski of Atlantic Traffic Design, our traffic expert, will, will submit a parking study, which will demonstrate that the existing onsite parking is more than adequate to support the operation of the McDonald's restaurant and the accessory drive-through, side-by-side drive-through, excuse me. With regard to signage, McDonald's is proposing its standard six-building design package consisting of word marks and the Golden Arch's logo situated on the building as follows. On the front facade, it will contain one arch sign and one McDonald's word mark sign. The rear facade will have one arch logo sign. The non-drive-through facade will have one arch logo sign and one word mark, and the drive-through facade will have one McDonald's word mark sign. McDonald's is also proposing one standalone ground sign near South Road on the plan, uh, on the right of the least area, as you can see right where the cursor is. This will help passing motorists indicate that there is a new McDonald's at the shopping center and allow automobile traffic to slow down, put their directional signal on, and safely enter the site, since there is no turning right. With regard to parking, McDonald's proposes forty parking stalls, including two ADA compliant stalls onsite. This complies with the town code requirement for fast food restaurant of ten spaces for one thousand square feet of building area. Since the proposed restaurant is just under four thousand square feet, McDonald's is providing forty parking stalls. Our traffic engineer Ethan Shikowski is available to discuss the, the minimal impact of its parking reduction. With respect to variances, at this juncture of the project, McDonald's anticipates applying to the following den- variances, excuse me. Maximum number of wall signs, maximum number of freestanding signs, percentage of maximum impervious surface coverage as it relates to the entire shopping center, only if that's deemed necessary, and the total number of parking stalls for the entire shopping center, if that's deemed necessary. So with us tonight, we have the following experts available to answer any questions that the board may have. There's Mr., as I indicated, Mr. Tomko Lamb from Bowler, McDonald's civil engineer, Mr. Ethan Shikowski of Atlantic Traffic Design, McDonald's traffic engineer, and Mr. Bill Weissgover, McDonald's representative. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Lamb.
All right, thanks.
Hi, good evening. I think everyone's familiar with the existing condition, Hudson Plaza, if you want, I could go over the existing condition quickly, or I could go directly into proposed condition, um.
Yeah, we, yeah, we know the plaza pretty much.
All right, I'll skip the first exhibit, which involves their aerial. I'll jump right ahead into the site plan rendering, which is the same as C, uh, she, C three dash, uh, four oh one. Um, we have only colorized it, added the landscaping, just for a presentation purpose, but it is exactly the same as their black and white sheet that you have that was submitted. Instead, we're proposing a four dial, so, square foot McDonald. Basically, we're using the existing parking lot to the south of their bank. We are proposing two full movement driveway off from the Ring Road on the tunnel on the west side. A ingress-only connection, so the bank customer can traverse into the McDonald. McDonald's being proposed as a one-way circulation due nature of the business, um, it is a fast food restaurant, so one-way circulation does promote safer efficiency around the site. There is a double drive-through lane, once again, um, is an art to this for McDonald, is all based on the signs and efficiency of moving people in and out, so, that's essentially what we have, and what's, still one thing that you would notice on this plan that screams out at everyone is probably the amount of green space. If you're familiar with the site, as many as you are, is currently a sea of asphalt. It is over ninety percent impervious, and we're reducing that amount by approximately some, seven, seventy. Here is a missing enclosure for trash and recycling on the west side. And aside from that, is a one-way circulation with angled parking spaces, um, for eco-compliance in addition to a living zone to the northern end between the McDonald's building and the existing bank. Utility wise, everything is available, this is a, um, shopping center that has been in existence for some time. The only, um, utility connection off from the DOT. Running way would be the gas service, aside from that, everything is self-contained within this site. Once again, from a stormwater standpoint, this is a great improvement, we are reducing impervious, providing green space, what requires naturally being increased, we're proposing over five hundred plants on this project. And I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
All right, thanks for the presentation, and go to, uh, to Mike here for the department's recommendations.
Yep, thanks, Carl, thank you for the, the introduction to the project, I think that was very, uh, that was, covered a lot of ground there, which is great. Uh, this is on for secret review, site plan review, and architectural review, um, you know, there's, uh, quite a bit of information still that needs to kinda be filled in, and, and a lot of that is, you know, captured in, in Kristen's comments. Um, for tonight, we are, uh, s- suggesting that the, uh, planning board could, uh, declare its intent to be lead agency for secret purposes, um, but otherwise defer action on, um, you know, the, the application, uh, pending responses to all of these comments from us and the other departments.
Yep.
Um, couple of things to, uh, make mention of, as, as we heard before from the, uh, representative from Southwood Crossings. Uh, you know, there has always been an intent, uh, to try to figure out a way to connect this shopping center with that one. Um, we think that would be beneficial, um, for both of the plazas. Um, and so we would ask the applicant to, uh, at least inquire with the property owner, if that would be possible. Um, we do have questions about the layout, um, I mean, yes, there's, there's a lot of, um, you know, the, the, the reduction in impervious surface and everything else, those things are, are, are very good. Um, we, we, we still wonder though whether the front of the building ought to be facing, um, uh, South Road, or if it were rotated ninety degrees, if that would be, um, uh, would be better, rather than looking at either the entry lane or the pickup windows. Um, and then there's, uh, the questions of architecture, which I'm sure you'll wanna at least talk a little bit about tonight to give these guys some ideas about what you're, would like to see there. Um, so that's really it, I guess I'll, uh, go to Andy, and we also have Mark Petrow on for traffic.
Traffic, yep.
Yeah, so, uh, we have a number of comments, typical for a first-time submission, just, uh, a lot of, you know, kind of details to be cleaned up and, and provided, specific to the town. Um, one thing we're asking for is an engineer's report in terms of the water and wastewater usage. Um, this, the site will discharge to the onsite, uh, pump station, um, which, uh, you know, is in the jurisdiction of the, the county health department, so they will need to review that and make sure that the capacity of that pump station is adequate. Um, it's a good thing that this is being developed, because, uh, as far as I'm, I'm aware, there is no existing stormwater management treatment, there's conveyance, but there's no treatment for this site, so this is a good first step. Um, and we appreciate, you know, the, the reduction in impervious, which is a great thing. Um, we are asking that, uh, despite the, the fact that they are meeting the redevelopment standards of the state, um, we're asking that they do consider providing additional, uh, treatment, particularly for the, um, the dumpster area, and potentially for the roof, roof drains, if, if, if at all possible. Um, I won't go into every detail, uh, the, um, that's, that's, that's pretty much it, I'll, I'll leave the rest to, uh, to Mark to, to discuss.
Yeah, you got a long, long list of initial comments here to go through. And Mark, you have a long list as well, uh, wanna chime in now?
Yep, uh, not a problem, thank you Chairman and members of the board, again, Mark Petrow from JMC. Um, so we did review the applicant's, uh, submission, uh, they provided the traffic study, and they did provide the site plans as well. Um, in reviewing the traffic study, we just asked them to update some of the existing volumes that they were utilizing to compare to the DOT record volumes, uh, they're, uh, they should be using a, a different hour, uh, based on DOT's, um, traffic data viewer, it's a little confusing to understand the time periods, they don't make it as clear anymore as they used to, but, um, there should just be an update on that comparison. Um, and then we asked, uh, for some additional minor, uh, corrections to the study, um, mentioning the operations analysis and, and how the pronouns are, are provided. Um, additionally, we asked for an accident analysis of, of the studied intersections. Um, and we did ask for the synchrofiles to be provided to our office for review, um, so that we can take a closer in-depth, uh, review of that. Um, lastly, on the, on the traffic study, uh, we asked that the park analysis, um, just be revised to separate out some of the more specific online, I, onsite uses, as some of them are not typical for a shopping center. We asked you just have them broken out for some of the specific uses. Um, and then as far as the site plan, uh, items, we had some minor comments as relates to signage, and also some pedestrian, uh, crossing and, uh, sidewalk locations. We did ask them to update the, uh, existing curbants at the, at the center's Egress driveway with South Road. Um, they're currently, uh, out of, uh, current DOT standards, and we asked for them to be updated. Um, and that's a quick synopsis, I wasn't getting into everything, but, um, we did ask for an overall of the truck turning movements, not just into the site, uh, location being specific to McDonald's. But, uh, that's the short end of it, if you wanted to go into greater detail, I can.
Yep, that's a good, good summary for now, thanks, Mark.
Not a problem.
They'll, they'll look through your, uh, letter. All right, uh, let's see. Let's, uh, go around the, the board for comments. Start with Nicole.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I think there's still a lot of, uh, questions, uh, that need to be answered. Um, I would just wanna reiterate that it looked like the fire department had a lot of comments, and if you could just get with the fire department, uh, to an- to get some of those questions answered, that'd be great. Um, otherwise, uh, the plans look good so far, I, I think it's definitely an improvement that you're gonna have more green space there and less impervious, so, uh, looking good so far.
All right, thanks. Um, do you have any thoughts about, uh, and as we go around, any thoughts about the orientation of the building? I think Mike had suggested, uh, management space.
Yeah, I mean, I, I understand, yeah, I, I understand what, that he's coming from, um, but I, I do know you look at, um, fast food restaurant right across the street Wendy's, and the drive-through is right on Route Nine, so, I.
That's, yeah, that's, well, it's fairly, that's like forty years old or something, right?
Well, yeah, I mean, it's.
It's been there a while, but.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, I mean, obviously it'd probably look better if, if the front was facing Route Nine, um, but, you know, like I said, you already have a fast food restaurant across the street that has the same thing, so.
Is, is, is that for aesthetic, just the look, or?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, no, for, no other reason?
Not really, no.
Yeah.
Uh, so you're not seeing, you know, the, the window, the, the, you're seeing the, the main facade, uh, from the, the road.
Yeah, I know, it.
And it's also easier for pedestrian, for anybody walking by to, to, to get into it pedestrian-wise versus walking across the drive-through lanes.
Right.
Yeah.
Is another big reason for it, but, do you have any other comments, Almet?
So, yeah, I'm trying to get, rub my head around, because I've been in the blast zone. This is the open space where they used to sell the Christmas trees.
Christmas tree, yeah, yep.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
And, and that, the McDonald's gonna be there with all the greenery, and Price Chopper on the other side?
Yeah, so obviously it's gonna take away from those parking spots, so then, you know, at Christmas time and stuff like that,
Yeah, so, but.
you'll just have to park, you know, a little bit further down.
I mean, there's still, there's, there's still another, there's still another space between, uh, Hudson Harbor entrance road
But there's still tons of parking spots.
and this, that, where, where the Christmas tree's gonna be sold.
But, but Ma- Mavis is, is still there.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, Mavis is still there, yeah.
With its park, so, I'm, I'm.
Yeah, but the space in front of Mavis.
It's plenty of park, I have a hard time doing, oh, branch shopper.
I still, I still call, I still call it Wards Plaza myself.
Yeah, Wards.
No, I, I, I have no other comments.
All right, Peter?
Uh, the only comment I have here is that the, the design, I think if you want to get past architectural review, you're going to have to spend a little bit more time and attention. I mean, this looks like, really, like a warehouse building. And, uh, you know, we're, it's just not acceptable. So you're going to have to come up with some different materials, a different, some, uh, something more attractive in terms of design. Because I don't think, uh, this is going to be acceptable to this board.
Yeah, I mean, we, our town code, we tried to, try to do, uh, try to avoid flat roofs where possible, and we certainly don't want to see,
Well, and look at the siding.
And we certainly don't want to see any HVAC equipment, uh, so, take a look at that. Um, Ben, anything?
Still kind of early, but this is similar to me with the McDonald's across from Maris College.
Yep.
Yeah.
And the layout is very similar. That seems to be working, so I don't know. You know, Peter's got a good point with the design, but as far as the layout goes,
Layout is fine.
I think it's not too bad.
I mean, the one across from Maris, they, you know, the, the queue, the queue is shorter, so that the, uh, curve is at the entrance, at the, uh, end there, but, we'll see, uh, let's see, my comments. Um, I already re- reiterate Mike's comment about, uh, talking to the plaza owner about getting that connection to our, our new South Road crossings there as well. I mean, you've already talked to them about the, the storm drains and the sewer connections, so if you, if you got their ear to, to bring that up because that will help, uh, you know, there's a big hotel coming there, and that'll help cus- with customers of you as well to get a bit more direct access to the plaza. Uh, I would consider, I don't know if it's on the plan already, I see some dots. Did you already have, have EV charge stations considered? I saw four black dots in a, in some parking spots, but I wasn't sure what that was. But if you don't have them, then you might want to, you have to consider that.
Yeah, that was a previous comment that was brought up, so, doing our,
Okay. And you do have a lot of variances to work through. Uh, let's see what else I had to say. You're remo- you're removing those big, those four big light poles that are existing there? Is that how that's working, or are they integrated into the lighting plan?
I think that, uh, Tungco, you want to ask?
Yes, um, the existing light, um, both within this lease area that you see is being removed. We are upgrading the lights with LED light fixtures. There is sky throughout, um, in order to provide sufficient lights from a safety standpoint. Um, there are these little circles next to the parking lots, another one at the near the driveway, one along the south Ave.
Okay.
And so on and so forth, and the double light fixtures near ADA stalls.
Okay, thanks, good to see you upgraded. Just keep in mind, we try to stay below, you know, three thousand over Kelvin, so it's not too, too bright.
Yeah, a little warm light.
Exactly. And, uh, last thing I would say, you know, I just echo Peter's comment about the architecture, try to take a look at that.
Carl, I just wanted to clarify something you said before about the Maris McDonald's. I noticed, uh, I was just looking myself to see if I understood. So actually facing Route nine is, it's not the drive-through, the, the, the drive-through is facing the side, and then, and then it gets the access road in the back, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, the drive-through's on the, the south side, and then, and the pickup windows are toward the back, so.
Right.
I'm actually looking at an area of the Maris McDonald's right now. And I also looked at, in preparation with tonight, the Wendy's, uh, across the street. The Wendy's has the pickup windows facing South Road?
Yeah, which is not what we like.
Exactly, so we, we're the opposite of that, and going to the Maris McDonald's, you'll notice that there is the handicap stalls and, and about five parking stalls facing North Road, but the pickup windows are behind, uh, facing the shopping center the way. So we've put more greenery in front along the, the street scape.
I guess you, you, what you're proposing is just a slightly bigger queue, so that they're wrapping around toward the front.
Correct.
More space there. And, I mean, are all those parking spaces along the back expected to be for guests or employees, or, a- along Route nine, I mean? Because those, those have a, trying to get to the building, you got to cross the double drive-through lanes. If you're walking across, there's a crosswalk kind of left.
Yeah, there's a,
Crosswalk that, that ties into the sidewalk, you could see.
Well, now anybody parking there is not going to walk all the way down there to the,
There's also a direct sidewalk connection, yes, you do have to cross the double drive-through, but it's not uncommon, um, it's, it's, um, most time you even see parking spaces being along the, um, eastern facade in this case, but, um, we chose not to do that, just to provide this, um, lush green landscaping instead.
Yeah, I, I see that sidewalk come, that, so that sidewalk seg- segment coming out there, maybe you need some kind of striping there as well to,
Yeah, and, and we also took that note to heart, you could see the sidewalk, we tied it in up in the northwest corner of the lease area.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
So that goes all the way down to the front door as well.
Looks good.
Yeah.
All right, that's all I've got for now, thanks.
I move the planning board declare its intent to be lead agency to coordinate the environmental review of the proposed project as an unlisted action and authorize the planning department's circulation of a notice of said intent dated September twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one, a copy of the AAF and a copy of the application to the identified interested and involved agencies.
Second.
Moved and seconded for lead agency. Call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes five to zero.
Move the planning board defer further action on this application pending establishment of lead agency and direct the applicant to respond to comments and writing of the planning board and those received from the town departments and agencies included, but not limited to the following one through eleven.
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes five to zero. All right, we've got our comments for now, and, uh,
Can I just say that one clarifying point?
Yep.
Was the sentiment of the board that you'd like the architecture of the, the Maris McDonald's in Northford?
Um, I'll have to go take a look at that myself, let me look right now.
Yeah.
While I'm here.
How recently that one was looked at?
That was just three or four years, four years ago.
Four years ago.
Yeah, it's at least got a, uh, little bit of, you know, roof action going on there.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, that would be probably an improvement, certainly over what,
Peter? They have a long way to go.
Long way.
Okay, all right, well, thanks very much, have a good evening.
Take care.
Thank you.
All right, bye-bye.
Okay, next up is Taco Bell, another fast food on South Road. Who's here for that?
It's our fast food night. You guys want to put, use that, that space over there?
I want a second one.
That he's all over there?
To your right.
No, that's fine.
That's good.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is David Kaminsky. I'm the asset manager of Neptune Capital Investors, the owner of the project.
My name is Peter Galusko, Galusko Architects, I represent the Mui Brands. Is a franchisee who's going to be occupying the building.
All right.
So, Mr. Chairman, a brief introduction?
Yep.
Thank you. So I want to give a little history, if you don't mind. Uh, we came before this planning board, uh, starting, and I believe in twenty-fourteen, and spent many evenings here between twenty-fourteen and twenty-sixteen, uh, re- redeveloping, uh, this project. Uh, many of you recall, it was a former IBM manufacturing site, a contaminated site. Uh, there were three very old dilapidated warehouses on this site. And our plan was to make it the second business park that we had developed here, or my first being the Oakwood Commons project. We took a phased approach to redeveloping the project. Uh, the first phase was basically a cleanup of the existing buildings. There was a tremendous amount of asbestos in the buildings and other PCB cocks. Um, IBM was responsible for the site. Uh, it is a class, a portion of the property is a class four hazardous waste site. There's a pumping treat facility that has been operating for over twenty years by IBM and will continue in perpetuity, operating on that site. It doesn't affect this parcel, uh, but IBM had to come in and also remove additional soils, uh, to be able to make this project go forward. We received the approvals for a Hardee's restaurant in late twenty-sixteen that opened up, uh, and unfortunately, it just did not make it. Uh, they closed down in about mid-two thousand eighteen after changing from a Hardee's to a Carl's Jr., uh, which I honestly never understood. But nevertheless, we've had an empty restaurant for several years now. Uh, we was, I was approached by Mui Brands, which is the, as I understand it, the largest franchisee of Taco Bells in the United States. Several hundred, if I understand correct. And they have ground leased the building from us with the intent of, uh, basically modifying the interior to make it a prototypical Taco Bell. Uh, from a site plan standpoint, there's virtually no changes. I'm going to mention two minor changes. One, uh, is the, um, the, there's a new tower that's going to be added on the side of the building that Peter will go over, that faces Route nine. And thus, the ADA sidewalk that currently goes into the entrance will have to be modified. There may be a slight modification of the curb in that area. But for all intensive purposes, that, everything else that you've previously proved on the site plan stays as it is. Uh, there is also a bike rack area that is being added next to the building. But other than that, that's it from a site plan standpoint.
Excuse me, would you mind moving that board around, because why, we can't see it, we can't see it here.
Oh, sure. I'm, I'll sit down.
Is that better? Better for you, too, Peter? Yeah, that helps, thank you. Okay.
Is that better?
Is that better? Yep, there we go. We have enough packets too. All right, um, go to,
Covering for Kristen?
Kristen?
Yep, so, uh, there's not a lot more really to say, as, uh, you know, David explained, it's, it's pretty minor. Terms of site plan, in fact, we actually thought this was an architectural review only initially, but then, when we looked at it, we noticed there were some minor changes on the site plan, so we said, let's, let's just cover those together. So most of the comments that Kristen has, I, I think were, um, are primarily just things that need to get on the plans to make it an amended site plan complete. Um, they're not really terribly substantive. For seeker purposes, this is type-two action, so, um, what we were recommending, uh, for tonight would be, uh, to waive the public hearing. Um, note that it is a type-two action, and, uh, even though there are quite a number of things that have to be added on the plan set, again, they're all quite minor, and so the thought was that we might be able to, uh, grant a conditional amended site plan approval tonight, and then conduct architectural review.
Okay. Thanks. Andy, anything?
Yeah, just a couple of minor comments. Um, w- we, uh, we have a couple of questions, maybe at modifications to the handicap striping plan, not a big deal. Um, and we want to verify that the grease trap is adequately sized, which would just be a matter of providing us with some information about the internal plumbing, plumbing that's proposed.
All right, it's good to see an old, empty building be reused again. Go around the board for comments, uh, Peter?
No.
Ben?
No, not really, I don't have anything.
On that?
Hopefully it'll be more successful than the criticism.
I hope so, they do a lot of advertising, so.
And there isn't one in this area, so. Uh, Nicole?
Uh, no, not really, I mean, you just might need some variances for, uh, some of those signs, but other than that, I think that's it, so.
As I said, good, good idea to use a vacant space, um, I think there was a mention of an EV charger, I don't know if that's, uh, still in the, in the thought process.
Uh, we haven't really discussed that, but I think that the owner probably would agree to that.
Okay.
Uh, is there like a number that you're, is there anything in ordinance that states how many you're looking for?
Where, where, I mean, we just did a new town comprehensive plan, so we're about to pass, you know, working on some legislation for town-wide stuff, but right now, we don't have that.
Okay.
Station in hand, but, uh, you know, if you have, even just a pillar with two, you know, with the two charger things on it,
Two chargers?
I think that'll be sufficient for now.
Yeah, I mean, like, it's, the world is changing fast, so we haven't updated our code to reflect the, a requirement that we do try to encourage applicants to consider them, so.
So one, one, one pill- pillar for two chargers?
It's generally have a com- it's generally have a com- yes, it's one pillar with two, two wires on it, so it can cover two, two parking spaces.
Two vehicles?
I've added them at Oakwood Commons, so,
You can, you can take a look at what you, yeah, what,
We can get that done.
Dave did there and get the similar ones, I've, yeah, I know you have, it's also behind the, the restaurant there, your, your previous spectacular plaza, behind the hotel and such.
We have a little weather-related issue at the moment, which is that our, uh,
Oh, Zoom?
Our Zoom may have been dropped, so if you want, just give me a minute, I'm going to try to,
Sure.
Oh.
Re, Hmm?
It wasn't.
It's, the internet is gone completely? Cannot connect the network, all right.
It'll reboot.
It's going to be,
Yeah, so it may just take a few minutes, um,
It's fine.
Yeah, the Wi-Fi is down.
Wi-Fi is down, you want to take a five-minute break, and then, because we haven't taken one anyway, and then it might just reboot?
Yep.
Sure.
If it does do that.
We're good.
All right, I'm sorry about that, but, uh, I know we don't want to stay any longer than we have to, but just give it five minutes and, uh, we'll be re- we'll be back.